Jase, are we on?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And today is Monday, July 21st, 2025, and it is now 6:00 PM. We're about to start the City Council meeting for Horace. Please rise and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining tonight. Tonight, we do have Naomi Berkland, Stephanie Landstrom, and Rachel Dwyer present, along with Mayor Trudeau. Sarah White is available online. Is that correct, Brenton? So we do have a full house tonight. So we do have quorum. Starting off with the regular agenda, has everybody seen the regular agenda? Is there any questions or comments to the regular agenda?
No questions. No questions.
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have approval for the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to read through the consent agenda? Is there any questions or comments or anything that needs to be pulled?
No questions for me.
No questions.
No questions.
Sarah, you good?
Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, moving on to number five, approval of the City Council meeting minutes from July 7th, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to read through the minutes from July 7th, 2025? Is there any comments or questions?
No. No questions.
Okay, hearing none, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of July 7th, 2025.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to number six, public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to make a public comment for anything that is not currently on the agenda for tonight? Please raise your hand. Please come up here to the table, state your name and address.
Shawn Carlson, 8844 Northern Lights Avenue. Good? Go.
Yep.
Sorry. I'll try to be short and pithy. Busy night, looks like. I've been here a couple of meetings before, inquiring about the pond update in the north in the Lost River Edition. And at the last meeting, or the time before the last meeting, it was going to be, it was deferred. It was unknown what was going to be done. Just wondering if there was an update on that?
Nothing at the moment. We had to get equipment out of there because the easement that we had to access the site, they're building a house on that now. So that's why you have seen things move away, but we haven't given up on it yet. It's just we needed to get everything out of there before they started building that house because we had a limited window as to when they needed that lot back.
Okay.
It just...
So a secondary question on the same matter, was the, what has the contractor been paid yet? And will he be paid for part of that bid that was allocated for the weed removal?
So the muck excavation was a bid item. It's a lump sum bid item. Hasn't been paid for it yet. The project manager was talking with the contractor today as to what they felt was fair or what was going to happen going forward. So not yet on that item.
Okay.
Other items they have, because we pay them monthly progressively.
Sure. So, okay. Well, I mean, we're right back to square one, basically. Yeah. I mean...
Residents have sent me pictures as well, and it looks terrible. It looks really bad. Complete muck. The aerial view is probably the worst one that I've seen. And in person as well. It really does look quite bad.
I second that.
Jim, do we have a timeline on when we, or what will the conversations be with the contractor?
Ongoing is what I can tell you. Just, I don't have a timeline to be done yet.
But now that it's no longer, because it was pumped, the water was pumped out, and that would have been the right time, it seems like, to get to drag it or whatever was going to be done, now that it's full of water again and the equipment's out and it's... It almost looks like the intention is to not do anything else with it.
Thank you.
I wouldn't say that yet. We've done it both times, both ways, when it's dry and when it's wet. Like I said, we just don't have a plan for it, I guess, yet. Still discussing it.
Is it on anybody's front burner, on anyone's radar?
Yeah, we've been talking about it today, knowing that it was going to come up tonight.
Okay.
So it hasn't been a push to the side or squashed idea yet. It just wasn't the priority.
It's not my goal to waste anybody's time on this. I'm just being the squeaky wheel. So the sidewalk portion is completed. Is that correct?
Yes.
There's still a barricade limiting people, pedestrian traffic on the north end. Just the south end was removed. So it's causing, I mean, a little bit of confusion. Most people can just walk around it, yet it's kind of a, it's, if that could be, or I'll go move it tonight if that's okay. I didn't want to have my birthday taken away.
I'll check in the morning. I don't know what the status of that is right off the top of my head.
Was part of that project too, getting new covers for the culverts? The input and the output? No, that wasn't?
They weren't, they aren't able to because of the manufacturer of them or something.
Okay.
So no.
Just know that you, the culvert on the north end is unprotected. So, I mean, I'm the guy who fixed the south one, and nothing has been done since. It was bent after a big storm. The north one is gone, and I don't know if, maybe, I mean, in the good old days, we never had covers on them when I was growing up, and those of us that survived, we'd just play in there. But it is susceptible to young kids climbing down there too. So, and I'm, like, whatever, just FYI, because you can't see it because it's covered with weeds. So just know that, whatever.
I didn't know that. I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, it's been like that for two years, so, yeah.
It disappeared in a storm and...
Right, it got washed away.
They thought they planted it in the pond and they didn't. So I'm not quite sure where it wound up.
Yeah. So just in closing, I appreciate the comments. There's just, there's still a lot of, there was a lot of expectation for that pond to get cleaned up. It was assumed that when they saw the sidewalk going in and the slope repaired, that, ah, finally, we're going to get some relief from, with the weeds. And I think there's still a lot of ignorance or perhaps naivety, thinking that it's going to get handled. But there is a lot of frustration. And it's interesting where you can see, I live, my lot overlooks the pond, and I'll see pedestrians looking and they're stopping and they're pointing, and it's like, there's just, it's just an eyesore. So, anyway, it hasn't gotten, gotten any better, and it won't. It's going to keep, there is a scum that's starting to form on the top, which is usually, that's usually what happens. And...
I've also spoken to a resident who talked to Adam Carpenter, who thinks maybe the fountains can still go in this year yet. Does it seem like that's a possibility?
I haven't had any discussions with him about that. I can ask him tomorrow morning.
Sure.
Even the functionality of the fountains, it would be a welcomed, I mean, it's nice that they can be put in, but when pitcher, the pond water surface with weed free, you know, the fountain creates waves and borer seeds, whatever, and it probably disturbs, at least slows, curtails cattail growth. Now, the area that that fountain would be spraying, I mean, you're going to not see the bottom five feet, and it's going to just wash out maybe eight, a third to at most, the half of the pond. They're losing their efficacy with the current state, so...
Understood.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to make a public comment for anything that is not currently on the agenda for tonight? Please go ahead and come up to the front table, state your name.
Richard Oldren, 7814 Sunset Drive. I do not know if this is a Horace problem or a Verizon problem, or it can be helped by Horace, but we drove around the town today, and there is no cell service through about half of this town. One bar on LTE. Is there any way, because we have talked to Verizon, they have made us install Wi-Fi extenders for our cellphone service, and they are now failing. We spent hours talking to them over the weekend, trying to get it resolved, and they're trying to send us new ones. But the one whole block that we live on, I know, I think, eight people who have extenders. So we drove around, if you get anywhere away from the water towers or the schools, you have one bar of service. We drove by your place, you have one bar of service. It's an LTE, not even 4G or 5G. So is there any way that the Horace, as a group, can do anything to contact anything about getting cellphone service? Because we cannot go into our basement and call out on when our extender is down. Now, this is bad if 911, we can't dial out, something happens, you're downstairs, we have no signal. We cannot refer fire, ambulance, whatever. So I guess it's just a thing for safety sake and for dropped calls. We were talking to somebody the other day on Sunday, and they kept cutting in and out, in and out, in and out. So I don't know if it's anything...
The city administrator and I do have that issue quite often, so yes, we can definitely go through.
I don't know if there's anything, because I don't know, is there any tower, any antennas on the elevators at the time?
I don't know if there's electricity on in the elevators anymore.
So I was just wondering if there was any, if there's any antennas that were on the elevator for boosting signal, and now that the power is shut off to these, that we've lost...
And we can check.
Boost for us, because, like I said, there is seven or eight that I know of, just in our block, that have had to order extenders for our cellphone service. And now they're at the end of our, the limitation, and they are going out, I know of two right now, and they are trying to send us new ones, and then now they're trying to debate if we have to pay for them or not. And it's, I know it's their problem, but is it because we have been growing so fast that our signals are getting, or their signals are getting split up so much that we do not have enough antennas?
I thought that you were, Brenton, were you in talks with Verizon at some point?
So we have, at staff level, we have had communications with Verizon about that very issue. As Mayor mentioned, you know, even him and I both have same issues. But we have talked to our Verizon government account rep. They've escalated the issue apparently to folks that are responsible for getting new cell towers in different locations. So they're well aware of the issue. We have pushed it over and over. I know they are looking at potential sites for cell towers. They were looking at the possibility of temporary one, and the last I heard, they were going towards just trying to get a permanent solution, not as a temporary. Asked them for consideration if they were to want to do a temporary. You know, that would be a conversation we could bring up to the City Council if they're wanting to work with the city on, like a location, like our water tower somewhere, but they haven't. Or I don't remember if they said that wasn't as feasible solution, or if or it just didn't work for them there, at that location. So I don't recall the outcome of that one other, and they're pivoting towards a permanent solution, not a temporary one. So that's the last I've heard from them. It is something we bring up quite often to them, saying, hey, improve this. But we haven't gotten much more. So at the end of the day, it is, right now, it's in Verizon's hands, it's in their court. But we have tried pushing from the city side quite a few different times with them.
Because I know the last time when we talked to them, oh, it was a year or so ago, they said, we'll send a tech out to drive around. Now, it depends on where he drives around. If you drive around here, you have signal. You drive around, and the exist, the older developments, where you drove around in today, down to one bar. So I guess that was just a thought, if this really could, if they had or could push, just for, like I said, a 911 emergency or just the convenience of it, without having to have extenders put in the houses, so...
I was going to say, one thing that I have found, just for folks, if they're trying to improve the service, now, it's a little frustrating, but what I have found, like on my phone, I'll turn it into airplane, put it on airplane mode when I'm home, and I connect it to Wi-Fi calling, and I have found that better than the extender, at least for my circumstances. But that has helped a little bit. It's just when you leave the house, then it doesn't help.
You've got to keep moving, changing.
So then you have to turn it off of that, so... Just anything to help there, but that has been, something has helped us, so...
Because it did work when the extenders were on, but it was like, because we had no problem years ago. And then with all, and I don't know if it's all the growth, if it's more signals out, you know, more cellphones out here, splitting the band or so, but then all of a sudden, it just crashed. So then we had to go to extenders. That's we are hoping if the city could help or so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that had public comment for tonight, for anything that is not currently on the agenda? And one more time, is there anybody that has a public comment for anything that is not currently on the agenda? And then one last time, is there anything that, or is there anybody that has a public comment for anything that is not currently on the agenda? Seeing none, public comment is closed. All right, moving on to number seven, Sheriff's Update. Mr. Keller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Feels like it's been a while since I've seen y'all. So going over the sheriff's report, I just recently went back to nights after being on my day stint for nine months. So far, nights have been extremely busy. Lots of variety of calls, as you can see on this month's sheriff report, if that gets pulled up at all. Will you be able to do that? Some of the things while I was on day side that I was noticing again were dog calls, running dogs off leashes. Been addressing a lot of sidewalk parking when I have time to do it. So that's going to be people parking in their driveways, blocking the sidewalk. It's a safety concern for families out walking, that kind of thing. And in most of these cases, people could either just pull three, four feet forward, they have room, or three, four feet back, and they wouldn't be blocking the sidewalks. Coming to nights here, it's the last few shifts that I've worked. Just pull up the other night, we were called to call to call all night with injury crashes. It wasn't in Horace this one. We have a guy who's been walking around the county with a gun and a machete. He's been cooperative. He just is, apparently has nowhere to live. Fargo's checked on him, West Fargo, highway patrol, we've checked on him. So that's been kind of interesting. We've had people run in from West Fargo, pursuits that we've been assisting with the last few nights.
Deputy Keller?
Yep.
I'm wondering if you can speak more, and I just got signal that they couldn't hear you in the back. Sorry.
No problem. So, yeah, just very, very busy, and if we scroll down, those are all the calls we take. And then if you scroll down further, there's going to be the reports that were generated from those calls. So you can see a very wide range of types of calls. Nothing that stands out as a problem, just a lot of different stuff, so... The other thing I'll want to remind everybody of, if you have some type of warrant, the jails had room lately, and we've been taking, we've been taking a lot of people in on warrants, and I'm actively out looking for some individuals with warrants right now. So if you want to take care of them on your own terms, that would probably be best for you. Otherwise, we'll help you out with that, so... Other than that, any questions, comments, concerns from council or public?
Is the individual with the gun and machetes currently in Horace?
He's never been in Horace. He was up in around that interstate Shan area, but I could see him wandering down this way. Like I said, he's been checked on multiple times. He's legally carrying. One is an air rifle that you can see, the other one, he's concealed carrying a handgun. If people observe him, certainly call us. We'd like to know where he's at and keep an eye on him. His plan was to leave the area, so hopefully that's what he's done, so...
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The other issues I've been, obviously, we've been dealing with, especially on day side, was the parking stuff with trailers. I don't know if that's being addressed. Is that on the...
It's coming up later on tonight.
That's what I thought, so... Hopefully, we can get a resolution to that and get everybody on the same page, so...
When you say you're dealing with that, are you saying, like, you're, are you talking to these people that have the trailer issues, or...
Yeah, so...
Picketing them, or what's...
Right now, I know Bryce Noonan's been doing a ton of, he's still on days. Lots of warnings and trying to talk to him about it, but I know he's also been trying to get clarification from the city on how we want to proceed, so hopefully tonight will kind of help that out. We always, like I said, try to be reasonable as much as we can, and whether a construction trailer parked in front of a new house unhooked from a vehicle is reasonable or not, I guess that's going to be up for the City Council to decide, and then direct us how they would like us to proceed enforcing that, so...
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
And then, as always, too, goes for public, City Council, anybody, if they ever want to do a ride along, hop in with myself or one of the Horace deputies for a few hours or a whole shift, always more than welcome to see, see what we do, so...
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the Southern Valley Fire and Rescue Update. Chris? Thank you, Chris.
All right. I'll make it quick. So from June 13th to July 17th, we've had in Horace 14 calls for service, nine of them being EMS, one a vehicle fire, a car exit with no injuries, a company hit a gas line while they were running some piping, and then police assist, and then severe weather standby. Turnout times improved since the last month. Our call breakdown, half of them were during the administrative period, the other half of them during our operational period. Time of day, 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, we're kind of the busier out of it. 177 calls for the district so far, 67% of them being in Horace. Still projected over 300 calls for 25. Some of the updates that we have, we started advertising a live-in program. So this is to have firefighters live in the station to help alleviate staffing and the calls for service, so we get out the door quicker. We just completed our regional fire academy. We had 24 people test. 23 of them passed the very first time. That's a record for the state, which is awesome. We had seven different departments attend our fire academy. And then we're going to be looking at opening up volunteer applications at the end of August, beginning of September.
Okay.
Any questions?
How's your guys' response been on the fire alarms that you posted one of the previous meetings, the installation of fire alarms?
The installation of fire alarms?
I hope so, yep.
Oh, we've had a few calls. I actually put some more flyers on the back table as you come in. We're getting some phone calls, but we're hoping to get more.
Okay. All right. Let's see how the questions add.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number nine. Before I start on number nine, there's a large amount of people here in the crowd tonight. Hopefully, we have a couple of representatives from the public that are going to be speaking on behalf of the majority of the group. We are going to be limiting the amount of time to three minutes per person to make sure we are not here till midnight tonight. So please, hopefully, you have a select group of people that are going to be speaking on behalf of the public, and then we will allow enclave representatives to speak as well. I do remind everybody to please maintain a proper etiquette and decorum. Allow people to speak. If you cannot maintain that, if you feel you're going to outburst, there's the door. I have an officer here tonight. I will maintain decorum. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lucas first and let you start.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. As you know, we have a public hearing for the plat and rezone of Suncrest Edition. One matter that we also have to address prior to those public hearings commencing, as is standard practice for the council. If the council feels like they have a conflict of interest related to a matter on the agenda, they consult with the city attorney's office to determine whether or not there is a conflict of interest on that agenda item. Councilmember Landstrom and I have had conversations regarding this matter, so the plat and rezone of Suncrest Edition. She works for the law firm that represents the developer. So my office has determined that there is a conflict of interest related to her on this matter, so she will not be discussing or taking any action related to the Suncrest Edition. And that is all I had, Mr. Mayor.
So before I start, I also want to make sure, Sarah White, you are online, correct? I want to make sure we have all four City Council people. Sarah, you online?
Yes, I'm here, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we are going to start agenda item number nine, bullet point A, the plat. We are going to open up a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, before we started, I would prefer that we would start with agenda item B before the plat, the rezone. The ability to approve a plat is contingent on the rezoning of the property.
Okay. So we will move to number, or letter B first. We're going to open up a public hearing for the rezone for the Suncrest Edition. And with that, I will look to enclave, if they would like to start off the discussion, have a member of their organization come up and discuss the rezone if needed, and we will then go through the public hearing.
Do we want Jase to go through the staff?
We'll have Jase give his staff report and then have enclave come up to discuss it. Sorry to throw you off on this. A lot going on with this.
That's fine.
So Jase will start with his staff report, and then a member from enclave can discuss their side of things. And then if you wanted to open up for the public to have their representatives discuss how they feel about the proposed rezone, then we can at that time. And, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion is to open the plat and the rezone at the same time, but Jase will start with the rezone discussion first.
Okay. So we will open a public hearing for the plat and the rezone both at the same time. And Jase, I'll go ahead and let you run with it then.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess first I'll start with just a rundown of where we've come from in this application. In your packet, there is a nine-page staff report, as well as quite a thorough and heavy-handed doc, our documents for the application itself. So I apologize, I think we're around 180 pages total for the packet of this. But this has been going on for some time, and it's created a lot of paper trails. So just to kind of start at the September 10th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission met originally on this application, and they opened up the public hearing through there. There was a variety of public comments. I think several of the folks from the surrounding neighborhoods are here tonight as well. Ultimately, at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission tabled the application and directed the applicant city staff, as well as two members of the planning commission and one member of the City Council, as well as a small group of residents to meet and discuss. And the following items that were discussed were the proposed buffer on the original plat that was adjacent to Holman's Fourth or the Sunny Side neighborhood, talking about information regarding the scale and type of proposed commercial and mixed-use development, and then the alternative lot sizes and layouts for Block 5 and Block 1 to accommodate a more gradual transition from low-density residential to high-density residential and commercial lots around County Road, for our County Road 17. That meeting occurred on September 25th, 2024. And in your staff report, there is a variety of bullet points of things that changed, to name a couple. Block 5, they removed two lots in the West Property Line, widened all the lots to be 80 feet in lieu of the original 70 feet. This also changed the classification from compact residential to SR. SR three along that area of the plat. Um, they looked at relocating the lift station, uh, they removed the lift station lot and increased some of the widths of Lot seventeen through twenty-one, uh, and Lot twenty-two was ultimately removed. Um, and then Lot One, Block One on your plat was not included in the original plat application, uh, but they added that as a area to be rezoned to mixed use. Uh, and this was done for a couple of reasons, with the removal of the thirty-foot buffer on Block Five. Uh, they worked with the park board to find a suitable location for the required public land dedication, uh, and that became on the north side of Lot One, Block One, next to Lyons Park. And throughout all of the neighborhood meetings, uh, that has been a reoccurring theme of what the intent of that area was. So their solution was to, uh, provide a zoning for it, uh, as clarification. Uh, ultimately got brought back November twelfth in twenty twenty-four, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, with that, they went through the series of changes that they had. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission initially did close it, but they motioned to reopen the public hearing and provided the public to provide additional commentary. After that public hearing was closed, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed, and as this pertains to the rezon, uh, the thirteen criteria that were listed in section four dash eight-point-five E of the city's land use code, and then whether these, this criteria's been satisfied or not in order to recommend approval of the rezon. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, in their discussion, did identify concerns with increased traffic, impact on neighboring property values, and kept incompatible zoning districts, and a poor transition of zoning districts from low-density to, uh, high-density and commercial lots. And after discussing, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, voted for to, to recommend denial of the rezon application for Suncrest Edition, um, as stated previously citing section four dash eight-point-five E, um, and mainly focusing a lot of their attention on just the overall transition between the existing development and the new one. Um, their request for rezoning right now includes SR three, compact residential, urban residential, mixed use, and public facilities or civic, uh, with the new zoning ordinance. Um, however, with that recommendation of denial, ultimately, the plat, uh, was voted five-one, uh, to be denied, and that was due, uh, on top of some of the, the changing development trends and the overall density is noted. Um, four dash six-point-one-zero states a plat should not be approved unless it is in a zoning district that allows the proposed development uses and dimensional standards, complies with the comprehensive plan, and complies with all other applicable requirements, including review criteria in Horus City Code listed in four dash six-point-one-one E. Uh, so ultimately, they, they had a denial because of the rezon, um, and they were not able to move forward on that. Uh, tonight, your guys' motions, uh, for the rezon, and I would ask that the rezon is done, uh, separate, and I'll explain here a little bit more. A, you can't approve a plat without the rezon, and B, uh, Horus City Code four dash eight-point-five H does allow for citizen protest for the changing of zoning. Um, and in front of you is a map, and it was included in your packet as well, of the, uh, protest letter that we received from the surrounding neighborhood. Um, we have deemed that as sufficient with approximately forty-one percent of the adjacent land within three hundred feet of the proposed development area signing that protest. Um, and when such protest is filed, a rezon cannot be approved without a favorable vote of three-fourths of all members of the city council. So it changes the voting structure. So even in a case where you have a two-one vote, that's still not enough votes to pass a rezon under that protest statute. Um, so with the rezon, the motion is to either move, or move to approve, conditionally approve or deny the rezon application, and then the plat follows suit with that. And with that, I guess I will stand for any questions you guys do have. I know Enclave does have a presentation, so I can get that loaded up here. Uh, but if you had any additional questions for me right now, I would be happy to answer them.
I don't have any.
I don't have any right now, Jase. Um, I'll wait until the presentation's made on both sides.
Yep, same, same thing here.
Same.
Okay, with that, I'll let you continue.
I'll try and, uh, well, Austin Morris with Enclave, um, start off first by, uh, sharing that, uh, it has been, uh, a privilege, and it's been fun to work with the city staff at, at Horus. Um, there's, there's been lots of productive conversations. We've enjoyed uh, a, all of our meetings together, even though, uh, at times if we aren't, uh, hitting it right on the head with what everybody, um, with what those individuals, uh, are trying to accommodate from a neighborhood communication standpoint. Um, we've made a lot of progress throughout this. I feel like everybody was congenial and, uh, working, trying to work together from a collaboration standpoint, understand each other. Um, so, uh, just wanted to share that. And then I have a presentation, but, uh, I'll probably skip some portions of it because Jase, uh, tackled, uh, quite a bit of the, uh, details. But Suncrest was an exciting residential mixed-use development in Horus, forty-seven acres, as shown in this depiction. Uh, it's in the community focus area, uh, from a comprehensive plan standpoint. The community focus area has a mixture, and called for a mixture of residential, commercial, and mixed uses, and guided fourteen units per acre. We're well below that. Um, if you could go to the next slide. Um, so when we started this process, we got the land under contract, um, we reviewed the comprehensive plan, we understood what we, uh, could do based on the guided land use. So we went to, uh, start planning, and we met with city staff, specifically, uh, Jase, and had dozens of meetings prior to even presenting a, uh, a plan or a plat, uh, and zoning application, uh, to, uh, planning commission. Um, as you could see with this slide, I'm just, uh, sharing the number of meetings that we've had, et cetera, uh, trying to work toward a resolution for the last twenty months on this. Uh, you can go to the next one. Uh, Jase did a great job of outlining phase one coordination, so I won't go too detailed in this, but I want, uh, I want it on record from the standpoint that the original, uh, plan that we worked on, um, probably back last year, year, January, February, March, April, May, with the cities, with city staff, did not get presented as the first phase, the plan, because Jase did and staff did, uh, share that, um, they wanted to ensure, one, we follow the comprehensive plan, two, we care about the neighborhood that exists to the, uh, west, and that we're thinking about, uh, density, traffic, and height. So the plan that went forth, and you can go to the next one, this showed, shows that plan, um, in a preliminary plat format. The plan that went forth first, um, had a proper buffer, uh, transitioning from the estate-sized lots to larger lots. The original plan, uh, we attempted to orient the ponding as well as the, uh, park dedicated space with a buffer between, yeah, thank you, Jase, with a buffer between those lots. Um, we discussed with the park district as well as Jase, is there an opportunity within that buffer to add trees? Is there a desire to have connectivity via pedestrian, uh, walkway? Um, is that something that the neighbors would find palatable? We had numerous meetings with the park district on this. Um, in the end, the, uh, um, the neighbors didn't want the, uh, uh, feeling of having a, a public, uh, sidewalk or bike trail behind their backyards in between these two backyards. So we did eliminate that, uh, from the, uh, plat in our second iteration. We then had to find room when we made some changes, and you can move to the next one. I'll probably skip around a bit, but in the second iteration, we moved the park district land, uh, to fulfill the park district dedication to the north, and that's what the park district wanted because there was cohesiveness with the existing Lyons Park and the connectivity and opportunity to amenitize that space, um, well buffering all of the, uh, existing neighborhood with park dedicated space with the retention pond along that long swath of property. You can go to the next one, Jase. So you'll see in this one, preliminary plat. In this second iteration, we removed the eyebrow, uh, at staff request. It's kind of a challenge from a snow removal standpoint. Um, we were asked at one of the, uh, probably post, um, planning commission meeting when it got tabled, and that was why we added a zoning. So we initially were going for approval for the residential zoning, but there was conversations with the neighborhood. They wanted to know what, what would be going, or what could be going within mixed use and commercial. And in the next iteration, we attempted to show the most intense version. We don't have offers on this land because we aren't zoned and we aren't platted yet. So we showed within the mixed-use zoning, a four-story product from a visual representation to show the transition from single-family, going from larger lot, single-family, to smaller lot, single-family, and then to the townhome or twin-home lots, and then transitioning to the commercial and mixed use. So this depiction doesn't depict what we build because we don't have any plans to build it. We're selling the land as a land developer, um, and we've gotten a lot of interest in it from clinic, fitness, uh, grocer, and we don't know what it's going to be, but when we've brought those forth, there's been different opinions on what should go where, and, uh, we haven't entertained any letters of intent, um, because we don't have land use yet.
That was just, I'm sorry to interrupt. That was for the commercial section?
Yep, so that would be, the commercial section would be to the, uh, south.
Yep.
And then mixed use in the center. And then, uh, and the mixed use, this is showing a depict, a depiction of intensity, because one thing that I have never done in fifteen years of doing this is, when zoning has a broad categorization of use cases, I'm not going to go in front of the city and show the lowest intense use and then do something totally different than that, um, when there's those cases of broad use. So from a story height perspective, we had lots of discussions at planning commission meeting as well as neighborhood meetings on, would you be willing to, uh, have a cap on story height at some level within mixed use, or would you be willing to have a cap on story height on the northernmost portion, which is closer from an abutting standpoint to the mixed use? You can go to the next one. Um, so we got denied by planning, um, we followed the comprehensive plan, um, we needed to do some more, um, neighborhood meetings in order to try and find some solution and collaborate with the neighbors. We, we met a few times, uh, we came back with a revised plan, which reduced lot count, which you'll see in the next slide. Um, and since then, we've been trying to figure out, and we've had a couple meetings with staff and mayor, trying to figure out, is there a solution after moving the lift station, reorienting the park dedication land to the north, increasing the lot size, and therefore decreasing the quantity of lots from, uh, by, I think, sixteen, and then talking about height, uh, variations. What's the character of the building with neighbors? Is there a path forward, and what does that path forward look like where we can come to this meeting and get approved? And now we're here. You can go to the next one. Um, our current plat that we, uh, have in front of you, um, includes all the zoned aspects, the commercial, the residential, um, and the mixed use. Um, it's got long. You can go to the next one, Jase. So this is a recap of that December sixteenth report. The, uh, um, the, uh, interesting thing for us, in fifteen years, I haven't, uh, I haven't had a development along a single-family neighborhood where we're transitioning from single-family to single-family, to additional two rows of single-family, to a fourth row of single-family prior to gaining some level of intensity on a major corridor like County Road seventeen, and, uh, had, had this challenge, um, moving it forward. And when, when I think of development from, uh, why do we buy land and how do we, uh, how are we successful in doing what we do by providing economic development and community value in communities? We take great pride in our work. Um, I think Enclave, as a developer, when I look at the past work, the body of work that we've done, we don't have projects from a design standpoint that aren't done really well. I think we take great pride in all the developments, regardless of scale, regardless of, uh, the income levels we're trying to attract for the various product types. Um, and we buy land because the comprehensive plan guides us on what we can put there, and that guides us to what we can afford to pay for the land and what we can sell that land for fully entitled. Um, so, go to the next one, Jase. I think we have some. You can keep skipping a little bit. Not my best work, but it's a long presentation. So this just shows the, uh, reduced density in the single-family. You can go to the next one. So you'll see the net change between the proposed and rejected density reduction. So a hundred and twelve lots in the original, ninety-four was the last, uh, plat shared with the neighborhood. Um, and we requested feedback on that, and the feedback after that meeting and after receiving the updated version was that it wasn't enough, and, uh, there wasn't a sense to meet again because it's just not enough. Um, you can go to the next one, please. Um, and since then, we've had some, some additional meetings. I won't go into these, but obviously we've been made aware of, uh, the, uh, two-story height restriction, and I've, we've shared that, uh, we don't think that's a productive way to develop a community and have good tax base and pay for city services. Um, and in the end, we want to try and find a solution and have this approved and move forward with a high-quality development, Suncrest. Um, happy to answer any questions you have. I don't know if I have any more fun slides, Jase. Oh, this one just outlines complying with the city code, and then the next one, I think, uh, shows compliance with the comprehensive plan. And that, for me, the net of it too is you have, uh, talented staff, you have, uh, city staff that recommended to the planning commission approval of the prior plat. And you have planning commission, um, that should fa- follow the comp, community focus area within the co- comprehensive plan that was designed, approved, and worked on by talented consultants that were all third-party. All the consultants that, uh, helped create that were third-party, and the invite for the public during that time to approve the comprehensive plan, um, it was a community endeavor to approve it, and we're trying to follow that.
Does anybody have any questions, Ron Clave?
I'm gonna wait until, I hear, um, residents, until, I guess, both sides have spoken. Thank you, though.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, I will look to see if there's any representative from the public that would wish, wish to speak. If so, please raise your hands. We can call on you and have you come up to the front. State your address and name. Lonnie, would you like to come up to the front, please?
Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members, full of recommendation is Lonnie Wong, and I live at Sunnyside Street in Horus. Um, we haven't, uh, collectively decided that I speak for the people behind us for this meeting. Uh, I decided to speak for them at planning and zoning, so, uh, I'll speak for as much as I can, but this is Lonnie Wong in speaking, and, uh, what I'm speaking about is a lot of information that I did obtain from the comments I got from the neighborhood. Um, with that said, uh, thank you for the council members for serving. I work with a lot of different people in the world. It is a difficult position you're in, and I do appreciate you stepping up for that. And I'd like to thank the Horus Planning and Zoning Commission for a lot of work they put into it, uh, and hopefully we can support their decision on this. The residents of Woodland The residents of Woodland Acres and surrounding areas ask you to support the Horace Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of the plan, Suncrest First Edition. They voted for it too, as was said earlier. A lot of work went into it. A lot of things still are unanswered. We tried really hard. We found really no compromise on this. And we did provide, and the Planning and Zoning and City agreed to, there are not compliance with the Title IV and some of the comp plan. Which I'd like to go over a little bit. I'll try to speak fast. We did have a lot of conversation on what is transition, buffer and barrier, what's the difference there? And that didn't fully get resolved. We do understand that a barrier stops totally any, in, I guess, inclusion of one neighborhood to there, like a big wall or trees that you can't go through, which blocks sound, noise, and anyone coming through. But what they do have planned there is a little bit of space and possibly some trees. With that said, 100% of the existing neighborhood when this started, we visited with them. And that Sunnyside Street, Woodland Circle, and Sunnyside Drive did say they were against this. We signed a big petition on that. A few people have moved on since then, and new have come in, so I can't say we're still at that 100%. We had over 90% of Ellis Lane, Elm Court, Oak Court come in and say they oppose this plan. Residents from Maple Lane, Mary Lane, Shadow Lane, Brink Drive, and more also approached us without our approaching them. To say they support the denial of this plan. The developer was not compliant with the Horace Planning and Zoning Directive to meet and discuss compromises on the plan. We did have some meetings, and it came right down to the last meeting we had with them. Those representatives there said they couldn't make decisions for their leadership. Said they'd go back and then come back to us for another meeting. That meeting didn't happen before we went to Planning and Zoning. I just wanted to make that clear. The proposed plan is not in compliance with Title IV Land Use Code in Horace. The Section 4-1.10 Minimum Requirements. The provisions of the code are to be interpreted as the minimum requirements necessary to advance the land use codes stated purposes. No building or structure may be erected, converted, enlarged, reconstructed, or altered. No land may occur, no land use may occur, and no lots of record may be created except in accordance with all of the regulations established in this code zoning. I have a few of those that we pointed out during the Planning and Zoning that were not in compliance. 4-1.3 Purpose and Intent Sections on pages 1 through 3 of that document. Section E is really covered there, Prevention of Overcrowding of Land. This would add 10% of the current Horace population into 30 acres. That is just the residential area. Placing three times as many people in one-third the area of our current neighborhood. Facilitating number F on that one. It is facilitating an orderly division of land within the city and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. This places high density and commercial into a very low-density neighborhood. This plan does not comply with that. Avoiding undue concentration of population, again, 10% of Horace's current population into that little bit of area next to a very suburban area. Protecting the value of properties against nuances and interfere with the use and proper enjoyment of property. Endanger personal health or safety or is offensive to the senses as provided under the City of Horace's ordinance. This will negatively affect the adjoining neighborhood in all these areas.
Understood, Lonnie. I need you to start wrapping it up.
Want me to wrap it up?
I do, sir.
I do believe you have access to all these documents, and I appreciate you giving me time. Three minutes is not enough to explain how the rest of my life will be affected by this. I do understand the situation you're in. Please look at the codes. I have all of them listed here. And keep in mind, the comp plan is not a regulatory document. It's a guide to be changed constantly. And it's something for you to look at to help you go into this. The plan that they do have has the mixed use, right? But they've taken every possible thing you could put in there with absolutely no decent amount of transition. I just wrote this down as I looked at it. They're going from SR2 we have now, directly into SR3. Compact residential, then to urban residential, then to commercial and mixed use, all with two streets. That's way too compact. That's way too many different products in one small area. The north side, SR2, is going to go to mixed use right behind a few people's homes. That is not acceptable. I will yield the rest of my time to the people here. And please, we ask you to support the Planning and Zoning's grade to deny. With that, I can answer questions now or later.
Does anybody have any questions for Lonnie? Steph? Wait, never mind Steph.
None for me. Thank you, Lonnie.
Sarah, do you have any questions on the phone?
Nope, I'm listening. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the entire group? Brent, come on up.
Hi, guys. My name is Brent Hanson. I live on Sunnyside Street, just down the road from Lonnie and the rest of those guys. And I would like to yield my three-minute timeframe for Lonnie to come back up.
We can't be yielding timeframe for people to do that. I need this to move along tonight. So if you have a comment, I would appreciate your comments.
So we can't yield our time to you?
I can't do that tonight.
So 10 other people come up and have, they can talk, but I can't do that?
I'll let you talk. That's what I want. I want your input, sir.
Our input is exactly what he has, but I'll yield my time then.
Understood, sir. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? Come on up. Hi, Ross.
My name is Ross Fenner. I live on Sunnyside Street for the past 25 years. During our conversation tonight and some of the prior conversations that we've had, we've heard some discussion about the comprehensive plan. I've had the opportunity to review that plan and make notice some of the things that are in there. In relation to assuming a parcel of land can be developed based on the the comprehensive plan without looking at other variables that are associated with that. I think within the plan, at one of the first pages, it indicates the comprehensive plan is setting up a guiding document, not a rigid rule. And that's right in the plan. That should have been a pretty bold statement for the developers in this case. Before they went ahead and decided that, hey, we're going to follow this plan to a T. The future land use map and related policies provided both general guidance and flexibility to decision-makers. Really what that tells is that that plan is there for guidance to you guys to make decisions. Ultimately about what happens with our city. It also states future land use map should be interpreted generally and not intended to provide specifically a rigidity of a zoning map or engineering document does that. And ultimately, the decisions about what happens for development of city falls within Planning and Zoning and the City Commission. We talked a little bit about compatibility and we've heard that already about the density and the transitions that are happening here. That area is about 312 yards long. So when we look at all the houses with the commercial property that go in that short period along with some streets and sidewalks. It doesn't leave a lot of room for all the products that they're putting in. The other part of this is during our meetings, which were very short and not real productive, I wouldn't say. I would say most of us walked away from those meetings feeling like we weren't being listened to, to be quite honest with you. Because we'd give suggestions and we're more or less told, ah, that won't work. We just can't make that work. And what brings me to that is the return on investment. They haven't presented any clear evidence that would indicate they can't make the return on investment, other than just their simple statements. That, hey, I can't make this work. As far as the city, their return on investment. It just doesn't fit. This development doesn't. Into the neighborhood that's there. Tall buildings right next to our main street. That people will come into will most likely make it feel a little bit like a tunnel. I think that that north end of the town is really what people see first when they come into our city. And I don't know that that's the view that I would want for the city. And I don't think that's the view based on past surveys and current surveys that the residents want. I don't think I have a whole lot more. I just think that what we're trying to do in that very small space is way more than what should fit there. The products that we're trying to put in there do not match what the current residents of Horace want, based on the past surveys. And also on the most recent surveys that we did just recently here. I've had a chance to review those, and what they're proposing just does not fit what the community wants. I think that's all I got.
Was there any questions for Ross?
No, thank you.
None at this time.
Sarah, do you have any questions for Ross?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Is there anybody else that wished to speak on behalf of the residents here tonight? I'll take one more person if they have it. Okay, seeing that, I'll look for discussion amongst the council.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, the developer has his hand up.
Sir, would you like to speak again? Sorry, I didn't see your hand up, sir.
I'll stick to three minutes as well on my rebuttal. The only items that I had to rebut on were three related to comp plan. The gentleman who said prevention of overcrowding of land. The total intensity of this development in its current state is 6.38 units per acre. So it is not by any stretch of the imagination a over-dense development. A multifamily development with underground parking would be 30 units per acre. The balance is there, this would be more similar on an average basis to a residential development with twin homes and single family. From a price point standpoint and transition standpoint, we have housing going from 750,000, around that. Transitioning to 550, transitioning to 3. And then the only other item I thought worth mentioning is when we looked at Suncrest First Edition, which is this. Compared to Southdale Farms, First, Third, Fourth, Willow Grove First, Southdale Farm 6, Maple Lake Estates Edition. All precedent within 2020 to 2025, all of those. If you reviewed those, those are consistent with what we're proposing here. So we're not proposing something unusually or uncharacteristic. And the last point I just wanted to make clear is, from an approval standpoint, we brought up in the past meetings, which are still open to, is we brought up that we are okay with an approved development with a two-story height restriction on the northernmost mixed-use portion. Because we do respect the fact that that piece of property directly abuts the single-family lots to the west. Whereas the property along County Road 17 that transitions with four layers of housing has a transition buffer. So I just wanted to lay that out there that we're still open to that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do you have any questions for?
I don't.
Sarah, do you have any questions for enclave?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Now I will look for discussion amongst the council.
All right, well, I guess I'll go first. I guess I just have one, I do have one question probably for Alex. Has Bolton Mink done any other traffic studies for any other developments within the city? Which ones?
For Oak Valley and for the Willow Grove First Edition. I also worked with Ben Woodside for a short period of time on access for the Circle K as well.
Yes, for the Willow Grove First Edition, for the Oak Valley Edition, and for access with the Circle K.
Okay. I guess when I was reviewing the traffic study, I was surprised and like slightly disappointed to find that the introduction references a completely different development. So it actually says Southdale Farms instead of Suncrest. In my opinion, that kind of undermines the credibility of the study. And the decision-making process, it's intended to support accurate and project-specific documentation is essential for informed review and public trust. And the inclusion of incorrect development information raises serious questions about the validity of this study. It's really unfortunate because I really have no way of really even guaranteeing that the rest of the information in there is not skewed. Because I don't know if it was copied, pasted. I don't know. But it does say Southdale Farms.
Sure. I understand. The Southdale Farms Edition was also a big capacity of this since we used those intersections.
I know, but if you look at the actual verbiage, it is talking about your development that we're working on today, but it calls it Southdale Farms. So I was really struck by that. And then, I guess either way, I had to use this as the traffic study because that was what was given to me. I do feel like the data seemed quite low. So I'm not sure if it was, in my opinion, it feels like it could drastically underestimate the results. Now, I know that you guys said that the renderings that were given were just like, I don't know, a worst-case scenario, but if the traffic study was going to also, I feel, should have been worst-case scenario as well. Because when I looked at your renderings, the data input on that traffic study lists 108 apartment units. But it appears with the renderings, you have the three-apartment buildings with 64 units. Just because I counted on the floors and I counted the balconies. And then you have that additional northern parcel slated for the apartment building. I'm assuming is going to, you know, Austin, you mentioned that that apartment building would be two stories maybe. I don't know what you're planning on putting on the northern parcel, but I'm going to probably just assume it's the same style as the ones that you guys kind of gave us in the packet. So it just seems like much higher, in my opinion, when when you guys are, we're not sure, right? We're not sure of what kind of buildings you're putting, these three-story apartment buildings. But I did have a conversation at our resident meetings that we had. And Joe, I asked you, I said, well, do you need to have three apartment buildings that are that large? And you said, yes, yes, we do. So I'm going to have to assume that you guys are going to be planning three-story apartment buildings at the max capacity over there. I don't know how else I can, I don't know how else I can determine what you were saying without saying that. So also with the traffic study, I was kind of looking, you guys mentioned adding turn lanes to 68th Avenue. And I can see that you guys are trying to show like the area as a whole. But, I mean, 68th, that doesn't even enter into this development at all. So I'm not even seeing access to this development from 68th. So any improvements to that is kind of irrelevant, I guess. Unless you're talking just overall region, which I'm sure that's what your intent was. But then you also talk about 70th Avenue. You know, with the future projections, you guys mentioned that it's very clear that there is a level of failure in the future. And calling for traffic signals. I don't believe it's going to be as simple as adding traffic signals to this corridor because it sounds like you guys are pretty well-versed in our comp plan. Our comp plan does say that traffic signals and roundabouts are just incompatible. So for me, I'm looking at the cost of having how many additional roundabouts that we're going to have to put in there. Because we can't, you know, putting the traffic light in between the roundabouts, that's just going to create a platoon. I think that's what the verbiage was when I looked it up. So the city is gonna need to have a plan for this. It's not cheap, and it is on the backs of all the residents to to upgrade that road for the amount of density that you guys have. I know you guys don't think it's very dense, but I do have concerns about that as well. I was looking at the transition. Even our staff report does, you know, the staff report that was provided does state that this plat presents a difficult transition between the large lots, low-density developments to the west, and higher-density uses to adjacent, sorry, density uses adjacent to and east of County 17. So when I was looking at this, just to provide a visual for you guys, it's not even three football fields long at its widest point, and it's not even one football field long at its most narrow point. Within that distance, this plat calls for a handful of larger-lotted, single-family homes, and then it quickly moves to compact residential, and then urban residential, commercial, and, you know, as many apartment buildings as you can fit in there. It's very drastic, and I'm not sure that that small amount of land can actually accommodate what you guys are trying to do. I mean, it, it's, I mean, even looking at the northern parcel, I'm looking at that, and I feel like that transition was essentially impossible as you move north with that requested mixed-use, most likely being apartment buildings again. I know you mentioned you'd probably do two-story. I'm not exactly sure what you're planning there, but it's basically directly abutting an SR neighborhood adjacent to it. You know, at the planning and zoning meetings, I believe, Austin, you had mentioned that you, you stated that larger lots would not be built next to commercial, because I know that the residents at this productive meetings that we had, they had mentioned, you know, "Why can't we have more larger lots?", and you said, you said, "Larger lots would not be built next to commercial or even mixed-use, because they're not very appealing and they would not sell." That was your words. And in the northern section of the plat, you're essentially putting this, this mixed-use, most likely apartment buildings, within just feet of their yards. Essentially, there's, there's no transition. It's, I'm worried about their homes, in your words, not being appealing and likely difficult to sell. If you're implying that you, you know, you wouldn't build it like that if it was a completely, you know, blank slate with nothing around you, I don't know why you would think it's okay to push that on, onto the existing residents that have one of the most, the largest lots pretty much in our community. I do think that their property values could decline, just as you had mentioned on the flip side. Let's see, I had some other comments. With the, with the density, you know, I just, I do worry. I mean, it's, I don't have a crystal ball, and like you said, you're looking at selling things off, but at this point, I, I don't know how to, I, I agree with the residents that there's so much going on in there that I, I just don't know how to make that work, and then on top of it, our school system out here. I am not on the school board. I don't know much about the schools, however, I do have a son in the elementary school. They are at capacity. We, you guys talk about we need to have all this density in town. That's, in certain areas, it definitely works, but we also need to be careful for what we're, what we're stressing on the community as well. And the last thing I will say is that the, the future, the comp plan, it is descriptive. It is not prescriptive. It's allowing for flexibility. I, I do think that we, we need to also take into consideration that this comp plan, all of the comments on there, I know that you mentioned that it was, you know, done by third-party, they did a great job. However, I, I'm not sure that the comments that were, that I see in that comp plan actually even portray anything that the comp plan shows, so I do take issue with that, and so I guess those are my comments for, for most of this development right now, so.
Okay.
Rachel.
Sure. I met with Enclave, I think it was Austin and Joe, last summer, maybe fall, and I'll kind of repeat a couple of the things. I sympathize with, I guess, the really challenging project you have here. I think you purchased that, that narrow strip between an established neighborhood and the highway, looking at a comp plan that was meant to be a guide, and that, that strip of houses or that neighborhood, you know, they, they've been living there for a long time, they're very much respected members of the community, and so they, they do really get to have a huge voice here. So I do think you have a huge challenge, and not that it's a bad plan. If you were to plot it in a lot of places, I think it could be a really nice neighborhood. I just, I think it's a lot going on there. I also, I don't know if you guys remember this, but my recommendation was actually maybe just scrap the plan and try something different, because residents really didn't like it. And I think maybe I, I got something similar about that that was, you know, impossible, or just the shape is unique, but yeah, I do, I do think that, well, here, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself. I appreciate also the work of the planning and zoning. I think I've really listened to and looked at what they've said, and I agree with the problems of density, the transition, zoning compatibility next to each other, traffic, potential property value impacts. And then all the residents who have worked so hard to preserve the character of their neighborhood, I think that's really huge. I think you guys are informed and engaged. I think at the heart of it, there's two things. The transitions are too abrupt. It doesn't, I don't think makes sense to go from those large lots to townhomes, that's what we've heard all night here about it, to all the way to the apartments and the commercial space. And then, for me, most importantly, I don't think it's what Horace residents want today. When I was campaigning, I kept hearing, and then our new downtown comments have been very clear, and the prior comp plan comments that weren't listened to, I don't think, all reiterate that Horace, residents of Horace want a small-town feel, a bedroom community. I don't think Horace residents are really super concerned with getting more density. I agree with Naomi that the schools are full, and that's not what we're trying to do. Again, it's not a bad neighborhood. I actually think it could be placed many places well. I, I don't know, I mean, I just don't think it goes there, and like Ross said, I, I don't see Horace as a, like a corridor of commercial that just sort of leads to Fargo. I don't see that for the spaces in between what we have in West Fargo and Horace. I love the green spaces that we currently have, the residential communities that are kind of the separation between the metro and Horace, and so those are, I guess, my thoughts at this time about it.
I know, Austin, you had mentioned the other side of County 17, you know, but to be fair with that side, I, I mean, I understand that there's some higher density over there. Like I said, some density is required in a city, and there, where it makes sense, by the schools, those kinds of things. But it was also a blank slate, pretty much, over there, where we were able to put in the correct roadways. I really feel like this is on this side of the road with the river. I mean, you, with the, the cor, the corridor road, that can't even be built out yet, because you guys haven't purchased that other piece of land going down to 76. And then also, I'm not even sure that that road would be able to even make a left-hand turn to get onto the roundabout, because it's too, too close. So there, again, you're having right-hand turns out of that development, not able to get onto County 17. You have two entrances into your development that are right off of County 17. So I just feel like I'm not sure how the traffic is going to be able to, to handle that. I'm very concerned about the, the traffic, so. Yeah.
Okay, I'll look for Sarah White to make any comments.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I, I'm listening intently here, and I had numerous phone calls over the last several weeks, and emails and whatnot that I reviewed, and I have a different perspective. I, I've worked on the construction front in dealing with developments and, and supporting developers, obviously, as a contractor, right? And I appreciate the efforts that Enclave and the neighborhoods have gone through here. Sounds like there's been several iterations. It sounds like they've attempted to come to an agreement, and I'm not gonna cite necessarily, just to regurgitate all the reasonings. I think Naomi and Rachel hit on quite a few of what I had jotted down here. I had a long drive yesterday and today, remote. Had to come down to Texas to help in disaster recovery efforts, and I'm in Alabama currently. And on my drive, I took the liberty of, of listening to several of the previous meetings, and just hashing through in my mind, you know? If I lived in that neighborhood, how would I feel? And what makes sense for our community? And what are we really driving at? We, we've done numerous surveys, we've done downtown neighborhood plans, we've asked for input from residents, and and honestly, we'd be remiss as a council if we didn't take that into consideration, and so my bottom line is gonna be very simple here. Many, many months ago, both the neighborhood representatives and the developer were asked to get together and come to an agreement. And unfortunately, it's very apparent here that no agreement has been reached that both parties can settle on. It's not something that I expect the developer to roll over and vice versa. It's not something that I expect the neighborhood to roll over on. There has to be a, a communal effort, where all parties give a little, right? I, I see numerous steps taken in that direction, however, ultimately, no agreement's been reached. With that said, reviewing the minutes, reviewing the actual commentary, taking a look at the recommendations of planning and zoning, I share the sentiments of the other two council members, and I live in one of those neighborhoods that's across from the schools. We have acre lots, and previous council was in place when high-density came surrounding us. And I can tell you that the buffering is a necessity, the transition is a necessity. It's something that was overlooked at that time, many years ago, and it's something that we need to take seriously as a council moving forward. So with that said, I have no further comments, and I'm prepared for a vote.
Okay, before we even go to a vote yet, was there anybody else that wanted to make any comments before I close the public hearing? Is that correct, sir? I need to close the public hearing?
Yes, you need to close the public hearing.
I will, give me just a second. Does anybody else that want to make a comment before I close the public hearing? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for both the plat and the rezone. Is there any further discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing none, I will look for a motion.
I can make that motion, Jeff.
Go ahead and please be specific.
I'm prepared to support the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, understanding that both parties attempted to come to agreement, were unable to do so, and as such, move to deny the rezone request.
Okay, I have a motion to deny the rezoning request. Do I have a second?
I will second, please.
I have a motion and a second to deny, uh, deny the rezone request. I will go to a roll call. Sarah White?
Aye.
Naomi Brooklyn?
Aye.
Rachel Dwyer?
Aye.
Rezone request has been denied. Okay, Lucas, do we need to make a motion on the plat?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will look for a motion on the plat.
All right. I'll make a motion to deny the plat for the Suncrest Edition.
And Councilmember Brooklyn, with that, your reasoning for the denial?
Because the rezone did not pass.
Okay, I have a motion to deny the plat because the rezone did not pass for Suncrest Edition. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call again. Sarah White?
Aye.
Naomi Brooklyn?
Aye.
And Rachel Dwyer?
Aye.
The plat is denied. With that, Lucas, is there anything left to do on number nine?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. If anybody wishes to leave right now, you can. I'll give a minute for everybody to clear out, if you guys want to sit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, moving on to agenda item number 10, water, sewer, storm, and street. ID number 2025-1, Deer Creek Parkway. Jim Dolman, you have this. I'll let you go ahead and take it.
So I'll just start with the, so Mayor, Mr. Mayor, as you'll recall, a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the, the protest hearing for Deer Creek Parkway. The city engineer was directed to go back to the drawing board, look at potential redesigns to the project in an effort to reduce costs associated with the project. So I believe he has done that, and so he'll discuss that. But no, we still have action to be taken based on the objection letters or objection responses that the city did receive. Recall that that percentage did not meet the threshold under century code, because a couple of those letters were outside of the protest period, and so that is something that we still need to act on after Mr. Dolman has his presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, the petition for the, for the project was held, for the petition hearing for the project was held on July 7th, 2025, here at the Horace Meeting House. Written proposals were received during that period and were summarized and reviewed. Residents provided feedback and discussed additional protests outside of the public protest hearing. As Luca said, the city council directed engineering to review the project, provide an estimate for reducing the lane widths, and rework the preliminary special assessments to only those areas in Deer Creek Estates, Deer Creek Estates Second and Third Editions. We reduced the street width to 24 feet and removed the south sidewalk, leaving the norshed use path. Cost savings, savings to the project were estimated at approximately $150,000. We also did prepare a reworking of the special assessments that you were provided, a map for that shows what it would look like if the, basically everything but those Deer Creek parcels were taken out, so.
Thanks for doing that, Jim.
Yeah, seems more fair.
Jim, I know you mentioned reducing the lane widths and removing the sidewalk, and I, I know that we talked about this at the last meeting, but is there, there is no ability? there is no ability to rehab what's currently there as an additional cost savings or not?
So by the time all gets said and done, there's about $75,000 worth of pavement work that has to be done to get the utilities of Deer Creek Estates addition. So the best example that I can show you for that type of work, provided this project doesn't go through, is look at Park Drive, Dakota Drive, or those that have been rehabbed with utilities going through them and how they have basically become a pothole city and through settlement and other things and life of pavement. So there is a pretty significant portion of this, like I showed you last meeting, that would have to get removed and replaced just due to extending the utilities from the sanitary sewer lift station 13 and then the crossing of the storm sewer. One of the things that was a compromise, so to speak, was removing the stormwater pond from the Deer Creek Estates addition on the north side, Deer Creek Parkway, and using the one on the south side so that the water doesn't go out to Conne Road 17 to Cheyenne River. It just goes to the storm sewer system that was recently installed in 64th Avenue to Drain 27. So keep in mind that what is provided as far as preliminary special assessments are just that preliminary estimated special assessments. This isn't locking anything in unless you tell us or direct us that certain parcels do not receive a benefit. But you can do that. It does add a bit of a burden to those Deer Creek lots, but with this being classified as a regional street, there is the potential for city contribution as been done with other regional street improvements. So one thing we did talk about is if you zoom out, Jace, you can see how this district is small due to its geography and location to Fargo. So we did talk about some potential of increasing the local cost share to kind of account for that should that north red and white line would probably be where the boundary was had it all been in Horus. So that's something that we had just kind of briefly touched on. We haven't talked about it a lot on the staff level, but it's something that we definitely could talk about.
I guess my only other additional comments on this one were, as Mayor Trudeau kind of mentioned at the last meeting, there were a couple letters that were indicated, really not as late for the protest period, but actually viewed as early in the protest period. And for me, all intent and purposes, I think the protest was sufficient, in my opinion. I guess I'm not totally sure what action we want to take. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the collector designation on this road has kind of lost its definition to me a little bit in here as more of a local. So I guess I guess if the district stays the same as a regional versus a local with just zeros noted to the other parcels, that leaves open the opportunity for additional city contribution. I guess I would wonder what my other fellow council members think if that's appropriate, though. I mean, for additional city contribution in this circumstance when it's almost a local road.
Yeah, I can see that going both ways, I guess. I have a quick question. Is the ones that are $19,320.74, is that because those lots are a little larger than the ones?
They're townhomes, which is classified as another. We could make it a one.
Oh, okay.
We could make it a one, but just trying to stay consistent with the way the policy starts off. This is our kickoff point, so there could be a case for that being a single unit, yes.
Okay, then that sounds fine. So is the question about city contribution or shrinking up the?
Well, the question that you have is, number one, like, did you deem you have enough petitions to, I guess, stop the project, kill the project? Two would be, would you want to move forward because you did receive those petitions outside of the petition window with the direction that they, that those petitioning didn't want to be assessed for the improvements? And then the question then would be, is if you do move forward, would you move forward with the lesser section for minor cost savings or just rebuild it the way that it is in the rest of that area?
I would agree with Stephanie that any early letters of protest would be accepted. They would be treated as those in the window.
Brooklyn? Okay, Sarah, I'll ask for your comments first before Naomi.
I, my call cut out a little bit, so I didn't catch all of what Jim was saying. And I looked at this and I don't have too much of an issue with what I'm seeing here. These are fairly sizable lots. You have a couple pockets. Nothing too crazy. Traffic already comes out on Deer Creek Parkway and that road's too narrow as it is. But the amount of traffic and the fact that it connects to 52nd and at one point or another in the near future will be probably a detour route as Cheyenne gets expanded and whatnot. I have no issues if it's only, you know, $75,000 to $150,000. It makes sense to spend the few extra dollars to do it right. If it was, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, I'd reconsider that.
Sarah, how do you feel about, how do you feel about receiving two petitions too early before the window started? Should they be counted towards the sufficient letters for protest?
You know, I struggle with that, but we have guidelines in place for a reason, right? Too early? It's a six of one, half dozen of the other situation, but there are guidelines and there are timeframes put into place for a reason. Lucas, can you share with me what the actual percentage of protest was and what the grounds were for the protest? Just, I mean, the development itself or were there specifics?
So I think Jim can speak to the specifics. The percentage is around 47% and I think with the additional letters, it pushes it over 50%, but I think quite a bit. The objections were essentially to the use of specials or having to pay specials for a project that there was not perceived benefit for.
And the people that were making those protests, had they had conversations with interstate engineering regarding our process on specials? Are they fully informed?
They actually reached out to the attorney on that as a matter as well.
Lucas, can you comment or is there?
The conversations I had was just on what is the process associated with filing the protest with the city? And so that's what was given in terms of the city having to publish the resolution of necessity in the paper. And then I provided that resolution to one of the residents and within that it has the information contained within that on how to file the objection, who to file it with and when to file it and when the city would act on any written protests. In terms of the special assessment process, I don't think that was was ever discussed at length with the residents on this.
We briefly go through it at the public information meeting, the public input meeting.
So you gave guidance on the timeframe and we still have letters of protest that were submitted outside of the timeframe?
So when we had the public input meeting, we told the residents that we would be presenting any written comment to the city council on such and such a date. They were brought to the city council at that date and were told at that meeting that the time to petition will be to come. It wasn't at that point and then I believe it was the July 7th was when the petition meeting was. So it was published on published on 28th of May, 2025.
So the resolution was published in the newspaper on May 28th. I think one of the first letters that the city got was May 20th. I will say the individual that I consulted with had timely submitted the protest letters, which is the majority of the letters that the city received to get to the 47-ish percent. And so what I told the, what I informed the council at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago is the city council has discretion on whether to accept the letters that were early. If the city council desires to accept those letters, it pushes the threshold over 50%, which then means not necessarily that the project itself is barred from proceeding. It just bars the city's ability to use special assessments to pay for the project. So the city would have to come up with outside funds to pay for it, which I doubt the council desires to do that for this project. And so that's the information that was presented to the council at the last meeting. And so that's where we're at now, kind of discretion up to the council.
Well, I, I'm a common sense lady and if people have protest, it's very rare that we would go outside of the protest period. However, we are elected officials and we represent these people and everybody should have a voice. So I'm going to open it up to the rest of council. I want to hear their opinions on it. I, I'm going to chew on it for just a minute here, looking at this and I'm curious what the rest of council thinks because that's how I feel. I know that, you know, did they miss it by just mere days? We're not talking weeks here, we're just days, right?
Yeah, they were not late. They were early by a few days.
One of them was eight days early and I don't know what the other one was.
Okay, I'm a teacher, so if you turn in something early, it's way different than turning it late. And so I would completely support. I feel like these are overachievers. They didn't miss any sort of deadline. Just from a big picture angle, I 100% support including them. They did, in fact, submit a letter of protest and it wasn't after we needed to cut it off. That would be my opinion.
I share Rachel's sentiment.
Okay, Naomi?
Yeah, Sarah, I kind of agree with the rest of you guys. I mean, she makes a solid case as a teacher over there. I guess my only concern then is, does the, I mean, we can't?
Are you going to say precedent?
No.
Oh, I thought you were. Hugely the council's go-to is to just create precedent for the city.
Well, and that's, that was in the back of my mind, Lucas, I'll be honest with you. That it could set a precedent. That is in the back of my mind, so let's talk a little bit about that.
I don't think it's bad precedent. I think you're punishing good behavior if you don't accept them, to be honest. And I
I agree.
And I'm the one that I completely understand that the statute says what it says and I would venture to say I don't think I've ever gone against what that says, but I defer to the council.
Yeah, I mean, we're all moms, too.
I, I'm inclined I'm inclined to accept them and then we as a council take the burden of deciding if the project moves forward and with what funding. I'm not necessarily stating that the city has to move forward or provide funding. We'll have to discuss that, but in this particular case, I don't think that it's ethical to not accept the voices of our residents and I would hope the rest of my council joins me with that thought.
Yep, we're right there.
And so if the council desires to accept the letters and it pushes the protest above that 50% threshold, essentially it'll kill this project, but that doesn't mean that the city engineer's office can't go back to the drawing board to come up with a new project that better fits the desire of the council and of the comments that the council received in those protest letters. So just know if that is the council's desire, essentially just give direction to the city engineer to go back to the drawing board and we can discuss this again at a future meeting, which it'll essentially be starting the process over. And the council has done that.
I apologize. Yeah, I apologize in advance, Jim, but in good faith. I can't move forward without accepting the efforts of people that were upfront and that are the voices of our towns, so I'm, are we looking for a motion here?
I believe we're looking for a motion to accept the additional letters of protest that were submitted early, which would push the threshold above 50%.
I will make that motion. Much as I hate to do it, guys, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, and the motion carries.
Do we need another motion to direct engineering to? Would this be a change of, like, the district? Would this be a modified district then?
It won't be a modified district. It's going to be, it'll be a new district that he'll bring forth and so we'll, again, start the process over. So the first thing you'll see is the resolution creating the district, the resolution directing the engineer to prepare the engineer's report and then we'll see if there's a petition for the project or not. If not, we'll go through the resolution of necessity process again, just like we did for this one.
I mean, are we talking mostly about, I suppose, maybe discussions with the developers on what has occurred and it maybe becomes a local roadway for their development? Is that what you're thinking?
What I'm thinking is the city council needs to give direction to the city engineer as to what type of road the council is looking for in that area so then he can work with his team to come up with that new design, which is, before he even can get to that, is the new improvement district boundary. That's the first thing he does with these is he looks at the type of road that is going to go in that area and then creates that draft or that preliminary boundary based off of that structure, that road size. And then we have that resolution of, resolution creating the district that we present to the council as the first action item and then directing those plans.
Okay, thank you.
So he needs direction.
We'll come back with a new district to start the process, so.
Would this then be viewed as local or still a regional project?
We propose something coming back.
Okay.
Give it some more thought.
Okay, with that, we are done with agenda item number 10 now, correct? Thank you. All right, moving on to number 11, the land use ordinance amendment. Jace, you have this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a continuation of a public hearing from the last city council meeting regarding a proposed ordinance amendment in which it reduces the maximum height in the mixed-use zoning district from four stories and 65 feet to two stories and 35 feet. At our last meeting, we did leave the public hearing open. We had a few requests to table for further conversation. I did include a couple pieces of correspondence within your packet, one from Chris Mack with Christianson Companies and another from Austin Morris with Enclave. I would note that myself, Mayor Trudeau, council member Brooklyn and Chair Hoek Alter of the Planning and Zoning Commission did sit in on a conversation with the BIA on Friday and had, I guess, kind of a listening and discussion session with them regarding some of the proposed changes and I guess just real high level. I think some of the concerns obviously are protecting the investments that have already been made within the city, looking at understanding the whole picture in terms of any potential overlays and what the effects of that would be and what areas those would be concentrated in. And then I think ultimately just concern of flexibility and being able to provide specific types of products within the community. And I don't know if Councilmember Brooklyn or Mayor Trudeau had any other additional items to add, but I'll just wrap up here quick with noting that the proposal on the table right now is a recommendation from Planning and Zoning to limit two stories at 35 feet. And the public hearing was left open, so I guess if you wanted to accept additional public comment, that is up to you guys and if you had any additional information or summaries to share on your thoughts with the meeting with the BIA, we could do that as well.
Okay, and before we start?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I'll wait for you to open the public hearing, Jeff, and then I'll ask a question.
Okay.
If you decide to.
The public hearing is still open for tonight. Once again, we will be limiting public comment. I'll set this one at five minutes just so we can get done tonight. If a developer has something that they would like to talk about that is different from what we have heard on the previous Planning and Zoning meeting and the previous city council meeting, I realize that not everybody was present for Friday's meeting and I will respect that. If you do want to bring some of those comments up, please try to wrap it up, though, after five minutes. I'll be a little lenient, but I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. So with that, Sarah, I'll go ahead and
Hey, Jeff?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I want to know Yeah, I, I just, I, I wanna know why this is necessary, number one. So this is a two-part question. And number two, if this is limited to residential construction, or if it's expanded into commercial? Cuz I heard the words mixed use, so bring me up to speed on those two items. Why is it necessary, first and foremost?
So first and foremost, in terms of, of the necessity, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been uh, taking considerable amount of time. With uh, workshops during the regular scheduled meetings. Uh, to kind of review items in terms of the comp plan, uh, which formulated into the ordinances. And just trying to kind of figure out what, in their opinion, was the best way to really um. Meet the needs of the commentary that we've received through the downtown neighborhood plan and the comp plan. Um, and also kind of looking at the overall aesthetic of the city. And trying to determine what does the city ultimately want to see in some of these mixed-use oriented districts. And this one specifically is for the mixed-use district itself. And so when they were going through their conversations, a lot of the items that they had a- addressed in terms of their concern on any given parcel. Was really kind of the scale and overall density uh, of some of these developments. I think they, they understand that there are areas in town that warrant and should have density. But in terms of every corridor, uh, every parcel of land, they expressed some concern of kind of a, a repeated pattern of density over and over again. Especially as the city's looking at finishing out the build-out of this future land use map. Uh, that was supposed to be kind of a 20-year build-out and has been done in about four years. So they were on the mission, I guess, to act quickly and start implementing uh, minor corrections and changes into the ordinance. To really help reshape and refocus uh, the types of development that the city of Horace could experience over the next few years. Uh, additionally, they're looking to also kind of force the conversation of what types of mixed-use development. Often, we look at mixed-use and we see a, a vertical building, four stories, retail on the bottom, parking in the front. And what they really were trying to look at is, is forcing the conversation of how do you more look at mixed-use in terms of a, a general area? And not just a building. And one of their, their first moves was to look at the uh, height limitation of these buildings. And kind of cap the overall concern of that four-story with retail on the bottom. From even getting off the ground and forcing alternatives for having additional conversations of the type of mixed-use development that occurs within the city. I don't know if that answers or brings you up to speed in the Cliff Notes version?
It does, I, I hope it's not a knee-jerk reaction, um, because I can tell you, I'm, I'm staying in a town. Uh, I draw, had the distinct pleasure of driving through Dallas and, you know, um, Mobile, Alabama, and Baton Rouge. And there are certain areas in those towns that have these beautiful tall buildings, and they're gorgeous. Um, I, I look at, you know, cities like West Fargo, I realize we're not West Fargo, and, and that ultimately may not be the intent here. But I, I see a beautiful corridor on um, Cheyenne Street North. Where even the building that Lucas's office is in, on Stedt Twitchell, is multi-story. It's got beautiful shops on the bottom and, and some, some nice, you know, aesthetics, very pleasing on that. And, and I, I don't know if it's a necessity. Now, I will say, um, in close proximity to residential, that's a whole different ballgame. We just discussed this, right? We just discussed uh, not having proper transition and having some concerns about density and whatnot in close proximity to residential. Is this the answer to that? Or i- is this a swing of the pendulum that may be going a little too far? That's something that I'm weighing personally, because I, I do believe that uh, especially in some of our industrial areas. There's some real opportunity for some really beautiful buildings that could house some wonderful manufacturing and things of that nature. That aren't close to residential properties, especially with the diversion opening up some additional lands. And I'd hate to limit ourselves overly. Uh, I'd rather see it go the other way, right? Where we leave it open, but we put limitations on area, residential areas where people don't wanna look at four-story buildings. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, Sarah, I can kind of speak a little bit too, um, since I've been kind of working with the P&amp;Z team. Um, so kind of what they were thinking is, when you look at the city, you know. What you wanna see that should dictate what your baseline district is. And then allow flexibility in other ways with the overlays that they are currently working on. Um, I do believe that planning and zoning has indicated that there are areas in town. Where overlays would create um, the ability to have taller buildings. And they're working on where those overlays would be, and, and where, where that should occur. Um, and so. Really, that's kind of what, I just wanted you to kind of have a background of that, because um, you know, they, they didn't just go on a whim doing this. I mean, they've been talking about this since December, probably, somewhere in there. Um, and so I think they're just kind of compiling all of the comments from resident feedback from even the comp plan. Our downtown study, the residents really wanna have that small-town feeling, and how do you accomplish that? It's, it's the scalability, it's the look and the feel. Um, and so when you have, you know, three to four-story buildings anywhere in the town. Um, it makes it very difficult to achieve what the residents are desiring. And so I think that's the goal of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, um, right now. And, you know, not to mention also with the.
What is, what is our? What is our thought on hotels? You know, I, I mean, there's outlying areas of the city that are closer to the interstate. That may be ideal locations for hotels. And limiting a hotel to two stories is severely gonna limit our ability to house uh, people that are coming to our town.
Oh, right, and I believe, Sarah, that there's areas in town that could probably accommodate that. And that's what the Planning and Zoning Commissioners are working on the overlays for.
Have they completed that, or is this something?
They actually decided at their last meeting that they were on hold, waiting to decide what our baseline is going to be. So that they can determine what those overlays are, are going to be. Um, I would say, at the meeting that we had with the BIA. Um, that uh, Mayor Trudeau was also at. Um, the developers did request that the um, the overlays come, like, as a package. With the um, height restriction, just so that they're, have an idea of what they're kind of um, looking for.
Okay, so there, there is, there is, is a means and methodology then to submit additional overlays or additional stories, if you will. Onto buildings in areas that are permitted by the city. And there will be a methodology in which to do that with this package, the whole nine yards.
Yes. Right now, it's not as a package deal, though, Sarah, because the Planning and Zoning Commissioners were waiting. To hear what council had to say about the baseline. The baseline is what's gonna dictate how tall of a building you're gonna be putting in your overlay. So they decided to hold off and wait until they heard from us. Um, I guess, my opinion would be that if we, if you guys, council, would like to have it a. Have it as a um, a package deal, I guess. I would be fine with that, but then I would like to request that we would not be accepting applications. Until the Commissioners and the council have had time to review it. Because the, this is why we're doing it in sections right now, is because we haven't had a chance to even really process. And, and look at our ordinances the way we should be every couple of years. Um, and changing these and, and doing what we need to do for the community. And I do fear that um, it's just their way, possibly, I don't wanna put words in their mouth. But um, a way to maybe have a grandfathered, and, and I would like us to be able to take our time if that's the case. Um, because, like I said, this discussion started back in December. And so when we talk about waiting until these overlays are completed, you're looking at probably, what? 10 months, maybe, possibly, I mean, I don't know, but it could be a longer discussion, so I just wanna keep that in mind.
I also wanna point out, Sarah, that um, each of the developers has the opportunity to ask for a PUD. Um, to uh, work with the city, to go beyond additional height restrictions right now, um, if they choose. So uh, there is an option for them. Uh, I realize it is uh, probably more costly, probably more work. Um, but there is an option if we do go ahead and pass this tonight.
You know.
Mr. Mayor, one side, just pointing.
I would. I would encourage this council, if we do anything over two stories, to make elevator, elevators mandatory. We made the mistake of allowing things over two stories without elevators, and I won't make that mistake again.
Just a, a quick point of clarification to answer, Councilmember Zivites, I believe, second question of what is applicable to. The proposal tonight is just applicable to all uses within the mixed-use zoning district.
Mixed use.
Correct, any property that is zoned mixed-use or looking to achieve mixed-use, this is what the proposal is for. Now, there are a few other districts that are mixed-use oriented, that are set to go to Planning and Zoning tomorrow night. Um, however, if there is a, a request to see the whole package deal, uh, most likely those discussions would be tabled. Uh, until we can bring forward everything all at once.
And you know, I, I do, I've done a, I did a little bit of research, you guys, um, just because I was reading an email um, from Austin. You know, he kind of talked about the restrictive portions of it, um. And that he hasn't really seen this working um, before. But, I mean, I was looking at Maple Grove, Minnesota, they have an area called Arbor Lakes District. Um, and when I looked it up, some of the language was um, very interesting. It said, "In Maple Grove, the area that most closely resembles old-town feel. With two-story buildings in the shops at Arbor Lakes and the surrounding Arbor Lakes District. This area is designed with a traditional Main Street aesthetic, featuring two-story brick buildings, boutiques, shops and restaurants, pedestrian-friendly walkways. Decorative street lamps and landscaping. It's a mixed-use development that blends retail dining, office spaces, also giving it a charming, small-town downtown vibe with the suburban setting." Um, and then I was kind of messing around on the internet, and then it said. "Height restrictions, including two-story limits, are usually set by local governments and often intended to preserve neighborhood character. Protect views or limit density. This allows the town to maintain, maintain a traditional Main Street feel in areas with the two-story limits. Developers often use creative design to maximize utility, such as ground floor retained with residential or office space above. Many small towns use the two-story cap to blend with surrounding residential neighborhoods." So other examples of towns that are um, not so close to home, that are kind of suburbs, kind of like what we are. There was Maynard and Hudson, Massachusetts, a suburb out of Boston, Davidson, North Carolina, suburb out of Charlotte. Um, and then these towns are balancing proximity to major urban centers with the desire to maintain a more intimate, small-town feeling. Which I feel is what the desire of the residents are, given all of the um, feedback we've been given. And then there was also just another comment about pitch roof. So, a lot of the developers seem to have this idea about the pitch of the roof. Um, making it over the, you know, the 35-foot threshold. Um, but that's not actually included, if you look in the ordinances, it clearly shows. Um, that we are measuring the height from the midpoint between the peak of the roof and the top wall plate. There could be four to five extra feet on top of that, and we also don't count unoccupied structures, as they're exempt from the height as well. So, I wanna make sure that we're, we're not taking things out of context here. And um, I just, I, I would just like the developers to think outside the box, do something unique. Take some pride in what, you know, what you're doing with what the community's asking. Um, and just kind of work with us on it, because it's, we have the ability to have the three-story buildings or more. Depending on what the Planning and Zoning Commission comes back at, so um. That's my thoughts on that.
I just have a quick question, Mayor Trudeau. Are, are we in council discussion right now, or are we still having public comments on this, before we?
We're still in public hearing. So right now, we're just openly talking about um, the topic. And as soon as everybody catches a breath here, uh, I will ask if there's people from the public that wanna have a comment. Sarah, did you have anything else?
No, I'm, I'm chewing on it. The, the only concern that I have is that everybody knows Horace is a landlocked community. Um, but I'm pleased to hear that those overlay provision. Um, I think that with that provision, it gives the flexibility in certain areas where that may wanna be considered. I'm open to additional discussion, and I'm open to public comment on it.
Um, Sarah, I did share your concerns too initially. And I know Planning and Zoning Commission has put a tremendous amount of work into this. And I listened to all the meetings and the memos, and, and Jace actually put together a fantastic memo for our meeting packet tonight. Which really sums up what we're doing. And once I was able to dig into it a little bit further and understand the overlays, um, Sarah, my concerns were the same as yours. And then I realized, I think that the, this process actually is a great process. Um, it hasn't, it hasn't been abrupt, like Naomi mentioned, I know P&amp;Z's been working on it probably since December. And if my understanding is correct from what I researched, their final recommendation to council is actually fashioned after the Dilworth. Dilworth Rail Mixed Use District. And I think that that actually reflects what residents have consistently stated is their view of our, of our city. Um, revising our mixed-use land, use ordinance language and combining those changes with overlays like we discussed tonight. And also still allowing the possibility of a PUD, if something doesn't fit within those two uh, parameters. I think is gonna provide great engagement in the development process. I think it's still gonna allow for flexibility, and I think it's gonna foster communication between city staff, developers, planning and zoning, and council. In the, in the entire process, and I think that's a good thing. In my opinion, we're not shutting down any concept or process, we're expanding opportunities for the engagement.
Okay, um, I, I appreciate the commentary, and I, I agree with you. I do wanna ask, is it limited only to PUD?
No, we have the overlays as well.
And if they do overlay, do they have to follow the PUD guidelines?
No, they would follow the overlay guidelines.
Because I think there would be more, um, there would be a couple more restrictive overlays near the corridors. And then there would be some less restrictive overlays in areas with intentional density, is that correct, Jace?
On its face, in, in early practice, yes.
Okay.
I, and I also point of clarification on Councilmember Landstrom's point of modeling. Uh, it was Dilworth's traditional mixed-use district, their Dilworth Rail District is 40 feet. So they're, they're traditional, no, just wanted to point that out there as clarification.
I maybe got those languages wrong, I'm sorry. Um, and so my understanding then is if it, if this were to pass tonight, the next step then, as we discussed, would be a discussion of overlays. And there will be opportunities for engagement uh, by the public in that process. And good discussion-making in those decisions, and I, I think everyone welcomes that engagement in that process.
Okay, I'm gonna look for public discussion right now. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Chris, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I spoke.
Talk a little louder in the mic, please, there you go.
I spoke uh, two weeks ago and um, had some concerns about uh, restriction uh, mixed-use to 30 feet. Um, I sent a letter, I had a suggest, alternate suggestion of increasing it to uh, 45 feet. I know Jace just mentioned uh, the mixed-use in Dilworth of 40 feet. I'm asking to consider something around 40 or 45 feet that would allow um, possibly three stories. Um, I think it is, um, the current proposal is very restrictive without knowing what the uh, overlay districts look like. Um, I think even the way you guys are present, presenting the corridor overlays. Once you do the uh, 30-foot maximum um, on uh, the mixed-use. on the mixed use or the other mixed-use properties like Old Town and Seventeen and Seventy-Six, the way the current overlay is, what I've seen so far, doesn't allow any of some of these corridor entrances like, let's say you go two-hundred-and-fifty feet or three-hundred-and-feet off. Right now, it doesn't show where you can go up to maybe forty feet or thirty-five, or forty-five feet. And that would be something we'd really like to see before there's a cap at thirty feet. And I don't know if this can be, if it's tabled or what the next step would be, but so we're encouraging. And then I got Alex Christiansen with me that can speak on this. And he'll probably speak of, if it does get approved, we already have some land that is zoned mixed use. Like, how does that work? I mean, we've been marketing it for years under these rules and now the rug's been kind of pulled from us. And is there a grandfather? I mean, I understand if it's not, if it wasn't zoned and if it wasn't already set up and it was an idea and we're platting it, that's different, but this has been zoned mixed use. We've been marketing this way based on what is allowed and now if it changes tonight, it, I mean, it changes everything that we've been marketing and trying to sell. So, let Alex speak.
Yep, nice to meet you guys. Alex Christiansen here. Yeah, just kind of, you brought up a few cities before, Maple Grove and some out east. There are definitely markets out there where two-story makes sense for mixed use and the rents can support it. Especially multifamily here, that's not the case. Other developers have agreed to that and will, I'm sure. We just need three stories and make the rents work. And it was brought up earlier, obviously, there's a lot of buildings other than multifamily. It's probably the, obviously, the recent ones that went up here, but there's hotels and office buildings and et cetera. So, I just asked that that is kept in mind as well. Yeah, like Chris echoed, we, three stories, forty-five feet, forty feet, I think it's a good compromise here. Substantially shorter than these buildings over here that we built. Those are about fifty-six, I believe. Yeah, as far as Chris, the land that's already zoned and also land that already has improvements in place, it's kind of a tough pill to swallow to all of a sudden be putting on additional red tape there. You know, we had a plan in place, we put lots, we had a plan there, we had a plan that you guys approved earlier and, I mean, years ago, whatnot. You know, so there should be some kind of grandfathering in there and understand that you guys want more control as you go forward. Okay? With your new developments, that is what it is, but there's a lot of specials out there now and obviously specials are hot topics. So, we need to be able to, you know, put the planned uses that we had originally to pay for those. There's been cities in the past that have put restrictions in place on improved land and ends up going back to the city and they don't have a way to pay for their specials and the city has issues. Even Fargo lately's had some issues with, you know, the bond rate and drop in and kind of negative financially repercussions from that. Yeah, so I say, just recommend that some compromise happens. There's obviously, you know, a small-town feel, but obviously, there's also other things you have to keep in mind with bond rating, financial outlook, things like that. And also, people that have invested a lot of time and money and, you know, we're counting on being able to go forward with our marketing plan. Otherwise, it's tough to make sense. We would honestly would have designed it differently had we known if these were coming. So, that's our concerns.
Thank you, guys.
Am I understanding correctly that what's behind this building, those apartments, that was a PUD, right? It didn't, it was non-conforming, so then you guys made a unit, a plan for that whole area and it was approved because it would go well in between this area and the schools?
Correct, so. It was a PUD, but originally, we were trying to do it without a PUD. We didn't want to do a PUD. So, we were, one option was doing kind of a flat roof and it'd be more of a commercial-looking building, but it would still be apartments. Then talked to city staff, talked to other members of the city and they didn't like that look. So, we moved forward with the PUD to do that. But there was another option and we ended up doing the PUD.
Is the most restrictive part of the PUD for developers, is it just the steps to get through or is it the two-year timeframe? What is, what would you say is the biggest stumbling block to a PUD? Because from the city's standpoint, it does seem advantageous to have a developer say, here's our kind of whole layout for this section. Here's what we're picturing for it. Because then I think the city, we only have a certain amount of land left to develop in this city and we only have one chance at it. And so, I think the city is really interested in getting it right.
I think part of the problem is some of these potential buyers, they're looking at a property. They might be a nonprofit. Or even if they're not a nonprofit, they'll purchase the land with plans to do the development later when they fundraise or whatever they're doing in their financial plan. But now they're reluctant to purchase the property because they'll have to do a PUD right away, which takes time and additional money for architecture, engineering, attorney fees, stuff like that, so.
I know, but typically, you don't like go straight to architecture and engineering before you even come to the city during the PUD process.
I'd add into that, over two years, you know, interest rates change, costs change, demand changes. So, it does make it harder to develop if there's such a line time, long time for him to do something.
Yeah, that's fair. I can see that being a challenge.
And I think that we've, we kind of talked at the last meeting, I think we were open to kind of looking at the PUD process, taking off a little bit of the red tape if it made sense to look at some of those things. So, I mean, there's that too.
You guys must see that we do want some, or the city does want some control over the general feel. And the residents are pretty clear about what they do and don't want.
And again, I understand that, but a lot of it's uncertainty. There's, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, but we don't know what it looks like. So, there's a lot of uncertainty on our end and that's why we're concerned.
Yeah, and also having a lot of improvements in place already. You know, there's obviously, if you're looking at a piece of land to maybe buy it to do something, you've got the due diligence, time to figure out and have the conversation with the city and get zoning in place. That's obviously depend on your closing. But if you're to the point where you already got roads in and you have a plan and marketing and you have people you're talking to already and you already got zoned and approved and at that point, it's tough to go backwards. And I mean, if the city wants to buy our land and assume all the specials, that'd be great, but they don't want to do that either.
Is the primary, it's, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, is the primary concern almost like apartments, rentable space, maybe above commercial? Is that the primary concern with the two-story height restriction?
No, no, even if you had a, just a three-story apartment building itself, you need that at least to make it financially work out. You gotta spread the cost of roof and foundation and the land price and just the rents, you got a certain level. Maybe someday, but today, it's not going to happen here.
What would be, okay, apart from apartments, what kind of buildings are we talking about? Because I don't know, again, the density's already an issue, our schools are full, nobody wants another bond referendum. I don't know that people are super excited about a bunch of apartments. So, if we were not talking about apartment buildings, what are we talking about that this is restricting? So, it's just apartments, kind of, that are, yes.
No, I mean, it's whatever you overlay it on. I don't know where you're going to overlay things. It was brought up earlier, there's hotels and wherever the mixed use obviously zone is. And we're not talking about just what's in place today, you're talking about the future too. As far as developments go.
Okay. Any other questions, Rachel?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I think you guys did cover the stuff that we talked about on the phone on Friday. Being the financial outlook and the bond rating, was there anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that'd like to speak?
Yeah, I, I feel like we're not totally baked on this. And I'm not saying that to undermine any of the hard work done by planning and zoning. I'm sensing some question. Help me sort through that a little bit because I'm sensing hesitation. And maybe it's just me because I'm on the phone and not there in person.
Understood. And we do have another public person wants to speak from the public right now. So, we'll address that in just a little bit. Go ahead, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Trudeau and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. For the record, my name is Dan Mavler and I serve as the CEO of Beyond Shelter Incorporated, a North Dakota nonprofit developer of affordable housing. And while I'm not a resident of Horace, I am here today because Beyond Shelter is actively working to bring high-quality, affordable senior and/or workforce housing to the community, to your community. And I am concerned about the impact that the proposed citywide height restriction would have on our ability to do so. Restricting all developments to two stories or thirty-five feet would significantly limit what is financially and operationally possible. Affordable housing depends on design efficiency, which often includes three-story buildings to allow for elevator access, as was talked about earlier, space-saving layouts and sufficient unit density. Reducing allowable height forces developments to spread out horizontally to achieve the same number of units, which significantly increases the land required, which also that larger footprint doesn't just drive up acquisition costs for land. We're a buyer, we're looking to buy into the community. But it also raises the cost of specials for that development, including roads and utilities and other infrastructure, making a potential affordable housing development in the community of Horace less financially feasible. I also want to specifically address the planned unit development or PUD process, which the city of Horace is proposing as a compromise to the height restriction. And while PUDs can offer flexibility in theory, in practice, from our perspective, they introduce uncertainty. Real estate development is risky and uncertainty creates time delays and also increased risks, which particularly for affordable housing. For nonprofit developers like Beyond Shelter, the risk begins even before project is designed. And so, acquiring land without any assurance that a PUD will be approved is very risky. And compounding on that, it often takes several years to assemble the complex financing needed to move an affordable housing development forward in a community. We've worked on developments two, three, four, five years before it actually got funded. And so, purchasing land that isn't entitled is very risky. And not knowing whether a PUD would ultimately be approved introduces a level of unpredictability that can make affordable housing development financially unworkable. In addition, I would say that housing is also the backbone of North Dakota communities. It is critical infrastructure for growth and a healthy community depends on a balanced housing stock. And I know I touched on this in my testimony provided on July seventh. And as a reminder, a balance of housing stock means housing options that serve all income levels, from entry-level workforce housing to senior living and to market-rate units. I would say that zoning policies that restrict flexibility in housing design and density can intentionally undermine this balance and limit the city of Horace's ability to meet the housing goals, which is outlined and laid out in Chapter nine of the city's comprehensive plan. And when I looked at those goals and specifically Chapter nine and I looked about a comparison on what we do and some of the needs and wants of the community as expressed, I would say providing a variety of housing options across income levels and age groups, there's alignment there. Developing housing that is accessible to aging residents and seniors, there's alignment there. Encouraging affordability and housing choice for essential workers and growing families, there's alignment there. Ensuring sustainable land use and infrastructure planning. I said infrastructure, the infrastructure on the land that we're looking to acquire is already in place and ready to go. And so, there's some alignment there in that plan. And then also, one of the last things was basically partnering with mission-driven organizations like Beyond Shelter to deliver lasting community impact. And I know the ringer there was ringing. I just have a couple more comments if I may. And it kind of relates to a compromise. You know, giving these goals, I respect, I am respectfully requesting that as a compromise, the city support a citywide height limit of forty-five feet. I believe this modest adjustment takes into account the community's desire for that hometown feel while also allowing just enough flexibility to accommodate diverse housing options. It enables thoughtful development, which I know you're looking for, accessibility, sustainable density, you need some density and all in line with the values that were laid out in your plan. And with that, I guess I would thank you for your, again, for the opportunity to speak here today. I hope Beyond Shelter can play a meaningful role in Horace's future, a future that includes housing options for all. And with that, I'm not going to stand, but I'll sit for your questions. Thank you.
Questions?
I think I asked you this two weeks ago, but you are talking more, you're talking less about townhomes and more about apartments for your clientele. Okay.
Absolutely, a three-story building, it's that financial feasibility and density needed to make the development like we develop financially feasible and to create an actual asset for the community that we're serving, the community of Horace.
Other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Sarah, do you have any questions?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other members of the audience that wish to speak tonight? Sir, go ahead and please come up.
Hello? I'll make this quick. Can you share with me one city in North Dakota or Minnesota that has a two-story height restriction on a zoning platform?
No other town is like this town with the growth.
No, I understand, but I'm saying we've worked with PUDs all over. PUDs are really normal. All across the Twin Cities, out of forty-six metros, we've probably worked on eight to ten PUDs. They're almost normal. But what they aren't restricting is what you can do from a base standpoint. You can zone the properties guided and zoned in a way that you can build a certain quantity of units. The PUD only protects against guiding the aesthetic. So, we know what we can do going into it. If we're going to go under a premise where there's an entire zoning classification that's two-story, the only place I can think of that, North Dakota, there isn't a place. Minnesota, there may be one or two. One or two. And one is probably Wayzata. They probably have a three-story height restriction. The second one, maybe there's a restriction in pockets, similar to that Maple Grove comment you made. Within a community, it's very normal to have a planned unit development master-planned area along a waterway, along a public amenity, along maybe a huge public investment like schools where you have a two-story area. And that's where I'm a huge advocate for, don't change zoning, don't have height restrictions. We've worked on five or six conditional overlays, corridor overlays in the city of Fargo in the last twelve months. And it's a negotiation, a discussion with the city to decide, hey, here's what I want. As a city, I want this. And then we go back and forth and we figure it out together. But to have a zoning district at two-story height is unusual. To have a conditional overlay within certain areas, reduce and increase height of a zoning district is reasonably normal in certain areas. So, that's all I'll say. Thanks.
Quick question for you there. Sorry to make you come back. So, how does the city go about doing that when we have so much? so much construction coming at us every week? Where do we, where do we find the break in time to make that change? And I realize you can't answer that.
Yep.
Uh, i- i- it's more for everybody just to sit there and think of that. You know, right now, there's an opportunity for Horace to try to take a breath.
Yep.
For lack of better words. Try to figure out what it wants to do with the rest of its land. As was stated earlier, um, we had a twenty or thirty-year plan that was accomplished in four years, or the majority of it in four years. How do we, how do we figure out what we want to do with the rest of our land before it's too late? And it's not, this, this tonight, what we're talking about is not trying to single out a specific developer or anything like that. And I hope, I hope people can see that. It's trying to figure out what do we want to do with the rest of our land. And I, I know I'm probably oversimplifying it by saying, we want the developers to work with Jace. Like I said, we, we hired an additional person to help him out so that we can try to free up his time and hopefully, uh, the person coming in can start doing some of the other steps that, that he goes through, uh, for his normal process. It's trying to figure out how do you, how do you make the changes properly? So my, my, my question for you, and like I said, I know you can't answer this. This is more hypothetical, is how do we take that step to, to make the correct changes without something else being blasted at us next week? Um, that hopefully you can understand that is our fear here is that, um, it, it has nothing to do with you or, or Mr. Smith or Chris or whoever in the background. I can't see everybody in this room. It's more of, when do we find the time to do it? And tonight, this is trying to figure out, okay, if we, if we take this step tonight, yes, we do plan on having overlays. But which step do you need to do first to protect yourself so that you can get to the overlays? Does that make sense? Do you understand at least what I'm saying?
Yep. I understand what you're saying. And it's a challenge. It's, uh, uh, I would say the, the challenge that that I think when we look at, like, if, how do I say this simple from a collection of a lot of ideas and thoughts, um, to knee-jerk react and go straight to two stories when two-story is not an intense development and you could find, I could find you in this community or Fargo or West Fargo, I could find you examples of three-story product that looks amazing, that has scale appropriateness, that you drive by and say, I'm proud to have that in my community. And I could find you just as many example of really ugly two-story buildings. So the zoning classification doesn't help aesthetic. All we're doing is crushing what can be by knee-jerking to that. That's just my opinion, but I think if the reaction was, we want to slow down development, that'll do it. But if the reaction is, we want to slow down development in a more methodical way, your current classification allows for a, a lot higher height. And you have about six, seven people here saying, we're not asking you to go to, keep it at five stories, keep it at four. You have people saying, gosh, three barely economically works. Two, no mixed use with apartments above, I promise. No mixed use with condos above, no. Two-story, maybe a couple buildings will be two-story in the office category. Very rarely you'll have a one-story retail with office above. To, to, too many examples that didn't work in your neighbor. So you just limit it to nothing. And that'll have a chilling effect. Now, PUDs are intense to administer. Most communities, including Minneapolis Metro, has pushed PUDs to only do these certain things. Because Jace and staff does not have time to process eighteen PUD applications that all have this, 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 this. Do we like it? Do we not like it? Do we like the siding we're using? Do we like, do we want a gable roof here? Do we want a flat roof here? Are the windows large enough? What percentage of windows do they have? What percentage of masonry? What percentage of articulation? Do we have building angelations at fifty feet? That's why Fargo doesn't do them anymore. They're trying to do away with it all to be more prescriptive in what's allowed within specified areas to have character and have some level of creativity. But anyway, the idea that, uh, we're not being creative as a development community when our job is to be creative within a zoning uh, plan is challenging for me because we, every day we're trying to be creative in how we make something work. But there are financial metrics that at a baseline do not work. So that's why you have fear. If you guys were adding some, some requirement, well, this area has to have gable roofs. This area has to have flat roofs. This area has to have a percentage of this. You wouldn't have these people here. They'd say, okay, I guess I'm going to comply with that. That makes sense. You want some, uh, character definition. Vail, Colorado, if you want to look like Vail, go to Vail. You'll build the same building, you know, same style of building. If that's what you wanted, you could do that. When you limit density to this extent, it's like, and PUDs, then just watch people not buy land here to build small businesses, big businesses, medium hotels, gone. I mean, that's the scary part about this is density isn't evil. Quality is what you want. And you want aesthetically pleasing quality. And you want to manage your corridors. And that's what the overlay will do. So, but anyway, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak tonight? Lonnie, come on up.
Thank you. Uh, I'll be brief. And again, I'm going to ask the council to support the hard work of the planning and zoning. Uh, this goes directly to what, uh, the citizens, the residents of Horace have been asking for and sharing with you. Um, you said it best. Uh, we had this forty-year, to our twenty forty-five plan, got it done in four years. Everyone who comes out to develop, you give them, this is the zone. You can do this many to that many lots per acre. They always go to the max. We're going to go to the max. I don't blame them. That's good investment. It's, it's time and I, I, I fully agree with this. My neighbors agree with this. Set the limit so there's no unexaggerated expectation for the developers. They know this is what I can do. And honestly, they come in and say, I've got a, a need for a four-story building. That'll be great for our city. They have to convince the council and the council can say, yes, that's why I understand this is written. That makes more sense. Um, listening to a lot of the neighbors talking about this, they really want to place the burden on the developers to show why we need it and to show us what they're going to do. If you look around, we have a lot of high density. We have a lot of low income. We have, uh, not as much of the big area lots and small-town feel that we had before all this development came up. And I agree with you. It is time to just take a breath and say, we only have so much land left. Do we need that much development? Do we need that much density? Do we really need a lot of, uh, businesses here? What do we actually need? And, uh, I applaud you for that. And I hope you'll take this to heart, that we just want you to slow down and look at what we're going to do with the last fibers of land we have left before the dyke goes up and says, we're done and we're overpopulated and our schools are overfilled. So it was the best help, uh, best kept secret in the state was the Horace Elementary. My kids got through there and now it's overcrowded again. Uh, I really want to preserve what we have left and so do the residents. And we appreciate you hearing us tonight. Thank you.
Jace, can you, can you just, while we're listening, can you pull up the mixed-use zoning, like what's allowed in there?
Was there something you wanted me to speak?
Nope. I'm just looking. I mean, there's so many. And it just seems like we're constantly talking about apartment buildings. Um, there's so many things that you can do in a mixed-use that can be two stories, make money for a developer. And if you want to do something that's higher, um, there's a process. You can do that. Um, you can go through that. Um, and then we also have areas in town that will absolutely have three-story buildings or higher, depending on what the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, um, comes back with. So I, all I hear is, well, we have to be able to have the housing. It's all about the housing. That's what this is about. That's, I'm, I'm hearing from developers and I just hear apartment buildings and they want to pop them up all over town. And I don't think that that's the desire of the residents. There's so many other things that they can do with mixed-use, um, besides apartment buildings. And even when I was in the meeting with the BIA, it, it was just really evident to me that it was about apartment buildings because that's all they talked about. So I, it's, we're looking at the land and developers are looking at a building. And it's unfortunate because that is why the Planning and Zoning Commission has moved to do what they've done is because we can't get developers to look at mixed-use as a land. They just, like Lonnie said, you put in a, an apartment building and you, they want to go to the max and that max will always be utilized. And so we have to be able to, like you said, Mr. Mayor, look at the land that we have, um, and figure out what makes sense for the residents. Um, I understand that I, I hear a lot of density, um, will help us pay for things and more growth will help us pay for things. I'm sorry. That is, from my time on council, that has not been the case. With more growth comes more bills and, um, higher cost. And so I, I'm not seeing that argument at all. I really am not. Um, I'm willing, if you guys would prefer to, um, move forward, we can do that with a motion. Um, I'm open to a motion to just pass it tonight, or I'm willing to make a motion to, I guess the public hearing's still open, isn't it? If we, oh, yes, please.
Can I please state your name?
Sure. Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Heather Dominguez and I live on Eighty-seventh Avenue South. And I think the reason that it's so important that we talk about housing is if we look down the road and I'm so glad that, um, uh, the gentleman from Beyond Shelter spoke. My mom lives in a Beyond Shelter building. She can't afford, I mean, so Fargo is a state of renters or is a city of renters. I'm not saying that we need to duplicate Fargo. However, we need people that can afford apartments to work in the businesses that we need to support our city. Um, we need affordable housing for our seniors. There's, I don't think there's anywhere that a senior could live in Horace right now, if they had social security. So I'm not sure where our seniors are going. There needs to be people, we call them, um, you know, workforce housing, people that are bartenders or will work in the hotels that we hope to attract um, to pay for the city, that, um, uh, the, the tax base that helps to support the city that we want. So I think that the emphasis is on how, is on housing. Um, and it's a really important component that we do need to look at, and that is affordable housing. And not affordable housing is, I'm, I'm seniors, uh, workforce housing, not most of the housing that we see. So I think that's why the emphasis is on housing. And, um, if you're asking a developer, yes, the risk needs to be shared. But if you're asking the developer to make this huge risk with absolutely no, other than go, applying for a PUD, um, it's, I think they need to have a little more security than that, or we're not going to see entities like Beyond Shelter or hotels or so. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I do agree with you about housing. And I think I almost see Horace as, and with the downtown neighborhood plan, it was really clear from that that Horace residents see a certain part of town as sort of the heart of the city. And so having that area be walkable with a lot of affordable housing makes a ton of sense to me. And hopefully that can have a lot of overlays that do allow for that. Um, but not maybe smattered all over. I don't know. That's maybe where I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around it, but I completely agree about affordable housing. But maybe where it's more walkable and just intentional where we put it. Um, but I do agree. And it's good to hear a personal perspective too with your mom and dad.
Yes. And I agree too with the, with the housing. Um, I actually have worked with Jace, um, working on, oh, Jace, who did we meet with? What's the name of that company? I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. It's been a long night already.
Uh, are you talking about the Cascade?
Yes.
That Cascade, like Community Land Trust?
Yes. I mean, I, I totally feel the same way, but what, what we, what I don't want is just random stories all over the, the city. That's, that's not, that's not what I'm hearing from, from the majority of the residents. So.
And I don't think that's ever the suggestion. It's just don't limit it to two, two stories, um, as the base. I understand that comment that was made, that makes sense to me, that we wouldn't start at limiting at two stories. Um, it seems like it's the reverse, like we're doing it backward.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public here that wish to make a comment tonight? We all know you. You have five minutes and counting.
I guess the real question here is, and I can appreciate everything that I've seen today, from the concern about the west side of County Road Seventeen, because that was here a long time ago. I can empathize with Enclave. That's a really challenging development piece there. And I think the biggest concern that I have, and as a resident of Horace, seventy-six forty Aquarius Court, um, in the Dreamfields area, just right over here, um, I've been coming to these meetings for nine years. And I share the same vision that everybody else feels here. But I also understand that you guys keep talking about, well, we can change that with overlays and we can do this with overlays. And, you know, we can go back and do this overlay here. Why change the building codes? And just leave the building codes and change the areas with the overlays. Do the overlays first. Don't change the building codes. Do the overlays first. If you want this area to feel like this, or you don't want large height restrictions, you know, right here on, put the overlay down. And then you're, then you have maneuverability. But if you change the building codes, you're essentially creating a PUD citywide. And the, and I think the reason that a lot of these developers struggle with the changing of the building heights and changing the building codes is they know, they have the foresight to see that when you change the, um, multi-use zone, that's effectively going to change every other zone. Cause that's going to have a domino effect of changing all those other zones. So essentially, you're creating a citywide PUD. And you can effectively do anything that you're trying to do with overlays first. Just do the overlay. It then takes a layer of them having to create a PUD. It then takes some of the, the stresses away where they'd have to fit into and design a PUD for the city staff. You can accomplish everything you're trying to accomplish with just providing the overlays for the developer. And they're asking like, if you're going to do this, can we get the overlays right away? Let's not do the city building code change, because that's kind of a drastic thing, as Austin was saying. It is a very drastic thing. Just do the overlays. And you create the overlays and you'll still be able to create the exact city that you want, that I want. And you're not going to hamstring yourself for the future. I, I think that's the biggest thing that they're asking for, is they're worried that there's not an understanding between the developers and planning and zoning and possibly the city council, that you're kind of adding the big step instead of using the tools that you could right away to curb that. to curb that and then still have maneuverability. Try to make it short? I guess that's pretty much all that I wanted to say.
It's gonna be the first time ever. Thank you.
Jace, I do have a question.
I'm coming off, I'm coming off mute because I don't think it could have been better stated. I agree with the sentiments there and I do believe that we can very easily adjust those overlays in pertinent areas that we want to target, especially those close to residential areas, and accomplish the same thing without effectively having to go through and review the entire building code. I'm in agreement with that. I think that's a happy compromise.
So, Jace, in your professional world of planning, is that typical that you would do an overlay instead of having a baseline and then work on overlays? I guess I would need your professional opinion on what you've seen.
It would probably be your most common understanding of an overlay, yes. That being said, there are examples in cities that have used them in the opposite manner for density bonuses, for trying to drive a certain type of development to certain areas, establishing a certain type of district in these areas. So, their overlays can be used in a variety of sense, but in terms of the most common sense of an overlay, yes, they are used as more of a restrictive pattern in specific areas rather than peeling back layers. Not saying that it's wrong to do it, but you can do them either way.
Okay, but Horace is so unique with its record-breaking growth that I, I mean, it would be backwards to just do a general over, to do a general height restriction, kind of an aggressive measure. But planning and zoning can't attack every part of Horace before people are, it's like a, it's like the Wild West. Everyone's just buying any developable land and moving on it as fast as they can. And, and the current comp plan doesn't really, I don't think, address the current residents' wishes for the city. And so, there's no way to address that in a quick enough fashion to stop some things from happening in the city. I feel like it's sort of a, okay, I was with you, Sarah, that I thought it was way too aggressive and a knee-jerk reaction. And I've warmed up to it a little bit. But I have seen, like Austin said, there are some really derpy two, I don't think you said derpy, but there are some, I'm, I'm just going to say, some derpy two-story buildings that I guess would conform. And I don't think those are very, I guess, impressive. And then I also like that building up on 17 by Main, that, the, the Onsted, Onsted Twitch Show Building. However, in the downtown neighborhood plan, residents didn't want that look in Horace. I actually love that look. I think, the, I mean, they're kind of all over the metro and I think they look great. But just sort of responding to that small-town desire. I don't know. I don't know really if there's a better way than this quick restriction, which I agree, seems very strange. And that's why I wanted it tabled for two weeks. Because two weeks ago, Sarah, I was where you are, thinking this sounded like insanity. But I don't know. I, I feel like it's, it is a way to slow things down while we can put eyes on all the parts, to do things well because we only have one chance at this and there's not that many spaces left in Horace. So, I guess I've warmed up to it. But I still feel like there, it's not perfect at all. Yeah.
So, rather than, if you're, if you're looking for a time base, right, rather than change the building codes, why don't you do a quick, comprehensive overlay for all of these corridors? So, that, that limits.
You say quick, it's not that quick.
But I've been changing the building codes is so much more. If you, if you do, if you did, if you did a quick overlay accomplishing what you're trying to accomplish now, and then as you develop and as you're starting to figure out what you want the city to do or where you want it to grow or where you want some of this development, rather than hamstringing yourself with changing the building codes, you could do a, 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 a quick overlay today, not even, not today, but by next council meeting, you essentially could. And then, as you work through the plan, like you're saying, like developing the corridor plans for 76th, 64th, all these different areas, then you change that overlay. But you didn't change the base building restrictions. You didn't change the base and that allows you to be maneuverable. Changing your base building codes right now hamstrings you and makes you, are going to make you do a lot more work down the future that's actually going to make your lives much more difficult.
Right.
Whereas if you, look at the overlay, you could do that within the next month.
So, Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify. Both changes would change the land use code. This is not a building code change, it's land use code. This height restriction or an overlay district would both be modifications to the land use code, which require public hearings before the planning commission and the city council, same exact process. This one has already been initiated, so this would actually be far quicker to just proceed with this. But just to clarify, both changes are to the land use code, overlays or the height restriction.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who makes, that wishes to make a public comment here before we close public comment? Or a public hearing, I'm sorry. One more time, is there anybody else that wishes to make a comment during public hearing before we close the public hearing? And one final time, is there anybody left in the audience that wishes to make a public comment during a public hearing before we close it? Hearing and seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Discussion amongst the council.
I guess I, I probably stated most of my comments. I appreciate all of the comments tonight. I thought they were very thoughtful and informative. But I guess, I guess when I come back full circle, I know that the Planning and Zoning Commission spent a lot of time on this. They didn't make an abrupt knee-jerk decision and it was a unanimous vote, I believe. And like Jace, Jace pointed out, I mean, mostly fashioned after the city of Dilworth, traditional, I apologize if I used the wrong word, traditional mixed-use district. I, I guess at this time, I'm still supportive of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's perfect, but I don't think there's a better option that I've heard necessarily to get sort of a large effect and maybe have some intentionality in where things are. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's definitely not perfect, but it might be our best shot. And then I agree that there's just a ton of work to do after that. Like I said, I initially.
Guys.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're talking about our city here. And we don't need to make this drastic of a change. We could easily have something implemented before the start of Q4. I, I mean, probably sooner. I'll be back in 10 days and I will sit in with whoever wants to sit in and we can run through some overlays. I would prefer to do that instead of changing the land use code. That's just a personal opinion. And I, I'm open to both sides. I've heard both sides. I reserved my thoughts on this until I heard the public comment. And I'm inclined to go that direction. Not saying that planning and zoning hasn't put due diligence in, they have. But I think that the repercussions in the long term would cause more work.
And then Sarah, you, you know that you don't want to change the land use code, but the overlays will still do that.
I think we can change the overlays in a very short period of time. And I think we can push it through the public hearing and the public announcements over the course of the next several meetings. And like I said, before Q4 starts, we're already into this building season. Hell, it's already, you know, over halfway through July. I think we could have this in place in fairly short order and adjust as needed as the needs of the city grow. Because we don't all have a crystal ball, like you said. We don't all know what's coming. But I think that that would afford us the flexibility to accomplish what's needed based on the voices of the residents, which I feel strongly about, but also the flexibility with some of the potential growth and not limiting ourselves in, in my mind, cutting us off at the knees with some things that potentially could be very good for our city.
Well, I guess if, if that's, I, I'm, I'm just going to say one comment. If we decide to kick it back to planning and zoning, then I would just ask that whoever makes a motion to instead look at overlays, that we include, that we won't be accepting any applications then until it comes back to council. Because we need time. Planning and zoning is going to need time. Like I said, they were working on this since December. It is July. So, it's not going to be quick. Like Mr. Vogel, you mentioned, it, it takes time. It takes a lot of thought. And if we have active applications coming in, we're not going to be able to address what we're trying to address. That's my, that's my thought.
Thoughts on that, Lucas?
Thoughts on halting it?
Yes.
I would essentially, we would have to know what districts, if it's just.
Well, and see, that's where I don't, I don't know. Because what, I mean, I don't know where planning and zoning would start with overlays. We have many corridors with lots and lots of mixed use. We have a lot of mixed use for a very small town. So, I don't know how to do that, which is why planning and zoning went the direction that they did was because there's, I, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you, Lucas.
And the, the call that we were on on Friday, and I'm not going to name a developer or point anybody out, I believe each one of them would probably wonder or ask, you know, could they be first just so that they could continue on with their business? And how do you pick and choose? And we wouldn't be able to. We'd have to wait until they all would be done, I would, would believe, just to make sure we don't show favoritism.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I asked about what district it would be because it would be applicable to the zoning district, the moratorium. I mean, the city has discussed a moratorium before. That's what this would be, is a moratorium on development applications or building applications within the specific zoning district. If there is an application for a building that is already going on with the city, that would proceed. But for land that is just zoned already, then those properties in that district would fall under that moratorium. And so, we just want to know from the council standpoint if that is the, the desire of the council. And then we'd likely draft something up to.
I guess I would need direction from Jace. I, I have no idea how to proceed with that. Sorry, Jace.
Gathering my process, thought process. It's kind of an additional swing potentially the other way. I mean, I, I think from the, the planning and zoning perspective of what were the challenged districts or the districts that they had concern with, were the mixed-use-oriented districts of mixed-use, Old Town, 1776, and Urban. Those are the four districts that have a more mixed-use oriented flair to them within the ordinance. I don't take moratorium as a word lightly. It's not, I refer to that as the big red button.
Yeah, would, would moratorium be necessary? Or could we extend the timeframe slightly? That's a Lucas question.
Okay, I was wondering, could you expand on what you're thinking, Sarah?
Say that again?
Could you just expand a little bit on what you're thinking?
I, I think that the applications could come in, but we could extend the timeframe for review, allowing us the time to take a look at those specific districts.
I know, but then you're going to have a developer say, well, we put in this application and now we need to be grandfathered. And we're, like, we put this in. It's kind of the same, the same argument that they've made, looking at the comp plan.
Yeah, Lucas can draft a letter to the developers that are looking at those particular regions and let them know that due to constraints with city staff, because we, we just don't have the staff, right? Due to constraints with staffing, that these could be extended. And I, I don't recall off the top of my head the exact timeframe for the applications, but I mean, extend it out if we have to. You wouldn't have to necessarily put a moratorium.
And, and my understanding of the request for a moratorium is it's not a long-term moratorium. It's just to put the pause in the applications until the planning commission can come up with the overlay districts, if that is the desire to proceed with it that way in lieu of the, the mixed-use height restriction process. And keep in mind too, with the height restriction ordinance, it requires two readings. So, this isn't a done deal tonight if the council approves the first reading. It would still have to be brought before the council again for a second reading in two weeks.
Yeah, agreed. I, I, I think it's six of one, half dozen the other to go either way. I like the flexibility of the overlays. I think it provides a lot more flexibility in different areas. And the developers could still work on their plans and it wouldn't necessarily stop their marketing efforts. But the sooner we would get on top of the overlays, the quicker they could react, you know? And maybe adjust one portion of a development instead of the whole thing, right? Which is what the land use code change would in essence do.
I'm just, I'm at a loss for words at the moment, sorry.
Do overlays also change the land use map?
No. So, overlays would be essentially a rider with underlying zoning districts. So, they are either a standard above or under what exists for the standard zoning district. And depending on what you would have, it would just be additional set of standards applicable to those properties within a defined area.
And it wouldn't require extensive rezoning citywide. It would, like he said, be over or under what's already existing. Lot less work.
Well, and we essentially would propose them as floating. And so, they wouldn't be applicable until a development approval occurred. So, then, anybody's random property wouldn't necessarily be subjected. It would be applicable to developing property as it comes forward through any sort of entitlement process.
Yep.
Jace, what do you think is the best or most effective way to do what we are doing or what people are wanting?
I mean, that's, I guess, kind of a loaded question. Because there are a bunch of different effective ways to do it. And I guess, Planning and Zoning Commission, that the starting question for them was take any given piece of property in the city of Horace and what do you envision? And it wasn't necessarily directed at a corridor. It wasn't really directed at an area of land. It was, let's take a random piece of property in the middle of a cornfield and what do you imagine happening on that piece of property? And their answer to that question was that two stories. So, from there, we kind of started to figure out, okay, how do we work with that? How do we accept that there are going to be areas that may need a different standard, which is where the overlay district area came in? I guess what myself and the Planning and Zoning Commission probably are looking for now is, is direction. Do you guys feel that just an overlay covering a entryway corridor in the first, however, 100 feet from the centerline roadway, is that your primary focus of, of really tackling the aesthetic and the scale within that frontage area of these primary roads? Or is it something larger than that? And similar to Jim with some of the engineering stuff, I, we're just, we're looking for direction of what council feels is the best avenue to go. I'm, I'm a flexible person and I can try to work with a lot of different things and provide some different solutions. But I need kind of an understanding of how you want to do it.
I guess my opinion is that. I guess my opinion is that I don't believe three-story buildings belong all over the city. I, I just don't, I believe that they belong in certain areas of town. And, um, that's how I feel, which is why I support the, um. Recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commissioners.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, I will look for a motion either way. If now we can have further discussion. We can all just sit here and stare at each other.
I'm sorry, say that again, you guys are cutting out just a little bit.
Sorry, nobody's making a motion, I'm just curious if this is the most effective way to get, um. I don't know, kind of to rein in some development and have more intentionality about where the higher density is?
Oh, boy, okay, so, um. I guess if I were to make a motion, I would propose, um. A denial of the change to the land use code as proposed and in lieu of it. Um, a delay or a hold on new permitting until October first of twenty twenty-five. Uh, with the understanding that any, um, any new applications that come in. Would understand that they would be subject to a potential future overlay. That may be more or less restrictive to the guidelines currently presented. And, uh, Lucas might be able to help me word that a little bit better, but that's where I would start.
Okay, Lucas, do you wanna clean up that motion, or do you want me to try to clean that up?
I thought it was very, very clean as presented. Uh, so the motion was to deny the proposed change, uh, and delay, uh, any new building permitting until October first twenty twenty-five. Subject to, uh, any new overlay districts adopted by the, or recommended for adoption by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the city council.
Lucas, do we wanna make that district specific, or is that permits? Single-family residential, what are we?
My assumption is that applied to the mixed use zoning districts, because that's the subject of this ordinance change.
For cleanliness purposes, do we want to identify the four?
You can clarify your motion, was that in regard to, uh, properties within the mixed use zoning district?
Yes, it would be, and that would be inclusive of, and help me, Jace, list the four out. Seventeen seventy-six, mixed use, what were the other two?
Old Town and Urban.
Thank you, Old Town and Urban.
Give me just a second, I'm writing down here. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sarah, just to clarify that, would, um, that would not change the base, that would just add overlays to add? But, but your point here is to not change the base?
Yes, that is my point, my point would be to not change the base land use. But instead to supplement it with overlays that could be more or less restrictive in specific areas. As a, a way to compromise between both the developers and the residents. Because then we can go in and utilize the survey results and the feedback from the residents in specific areas that have outlined. What they're looking for, I think it allows us to be a little more, um, subjective. And a little more accommodating in specific areas rather than others. Where you've got certain areas of town where the residents, you know, don't have a problem with that because they like the idea of that. And other areas close to, you know, where especially Old Town and whatnot, uh, there, they feel more strongly about it, right? So it allows us to tailor based on the needs of the results of the survey, which I think is really neat. It, it allows us to really target specific zones. Kind of make everybody happy, if that makes sense?
I'll second that, see where it goes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, I'm after roll call this one, folks. Uh, Sarah White.
Aye.
Naomi Berklin?
No.
Stephanie Landstrom?
No.
Rachel Dwyer?
Aye.
And my vote is a no, I'll look for another motion.
Another motion?
Jeff, say that again, I didn't hear your.
My vote was a no.
Your vote was what?
No.
No, okay.
All right, well, I guess I'm going to make a motion to approve the mixed use zoning. Land use ordinance amendment per the, um. Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, once again, roll call, Sarah White.
No.
Naomi Berklin?
Yes.
Stephanie Landstrom?
Yes.
Rachel Dwyer?
Yes.
That is three to one, uh, motion carries. Okay, folks, we're gonna take a small break here real quick, just to let the crowd clear out. All right, so, everybody that's left must really want to listen to our budget talk later on tonight. It's good stuff, I promise. Well, and parking. Taking a quick break while Stephanie had to use the bathroom here real quick, um, and then we will get back into it. All right, so, we're gonna start back up here on the agenda item number twelve. Um, Lucas, that'll be you, I realize Rachel's still on her way back in here, um.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can keep this, uh, really brief, obviously the, um, council had discussion on, uh, this ordinance. Uh, essentially the parking ordinance is what we deemed it at the last city council meeting. What we tried to do with the ordinance was essentially just provide definition to the type of trailers that cannot be parked, uh, on city streets. You pointed out, uh, during that meeting, uh, for the council members to be cognizant of what type of implication it is going to have. If, uh, these type of trailers are prohibited from parking on city streets citywide. And to, uh, consider, uh, the effect across the city. Uh, there was also a resident that brought up concerns with, uh, some of the, the newer lots, uh, obviously not being the same size as. Uh, some of the older lots in town, uh, that are larger, that afford the opportunity for parking inside yards and rear yards. Uh, these new ones, uh, just don't have that space. And so additional time, uh, was needed for the council to consider, uh, these changes. And, uh, so what we did is table to this meeting. The action item would just be, uh, on the first reading, there would have to be two readings of this ordinance. Uh, and so, uh, our office is just looking for clarification as to what the council is looking for. Uh, from the parking ordinance, uh, specifically to trailers. Do you want to limit what trailers? Do you want to look at different means of parking enforcement? An option, uh, that I think I had discussed, uh, previously was putting up no parking signs on certain streets within the city. Uh, the council has done that before, uh, and directed the city engineer's office to look at certain streets. Uh, to determine whether no parking signs could be put up on one side or the other side. Uh, and those recommendations have been presented to the council. Uh, so again, just looking for direction from the council. Uh, we can make any changes between first reading and second reading, or the, the city council can say, hey, this is not what we're, we're looking for. Just tell us what you want.
Mr. Mayor? Would I be able to make some comment?
Yes, sir, you can.
Would love that.
I'll give you longer than five minutes.
So I've been MIA for a little while here, but I've been discussing with my other Horace counterparts and. I'm not speaking for the sheriff's office here, I'm speaking for us Horace deputies that were also frustrated in trying to enforce this. The first thing I'd like to read is, our sheriff's office values, it's just real quick. We value all members of the community and organization. We are committed to providing exceptional public service and safety through professionalism, integrity, respect, fairness, accountability, teamwork. And the last one, reasonableness, that's what we strive to be as your Horace deputies is reasonable. In North Dakota sentry code, there's already several parking, or a lot of parking in there, um, that I've been enforcing. All throughout all your decisions, what you wanna do, um, with city ordinances. Thirty-nine, ten, forty-nine, covers like sidewalks, in front of private driveways, intersections, crosswalks, fire hydrants, all that fun stuff. You also have the additional thirty-nine, ten, fifty, which is gonna be like parking facing the wrong way, all that kind of fun stuff. Now, I, I don't know how city ordinances work, this might be a question. But again, there's thirty-nine, thirteen, three, that I've brought up many times. That says local parking and other specific regulations are not enforceable against an alleged violator. If at the time and place the alleged violation, an appropriate sign given notice thereof is not in proper position and sufficiently legible to be seen by an ordinarily observant person. So like, I, I know me personally, if I were to get a parking ticket in Fargo, I'm bringing this right in to the city of Fargo. So I don't know how that works, Lucas, how ordinances can be enacted when we have that sentry code? That specifically says signage needs to be required.
And that's why a lot of the, the action from the council in recent years has been just putting up the no parking signs.
And with, and with that, the signage is very hit and miss. Um, I have, uh, streets over here in Cub Creek where you've, you know, you're driving in from the east with the flow of traffic. You'll pass one sign, two sign, but then there's nothing past that all the way halfway down the block. Now, I need to make that judgment decision, they drove past two signs, but from where they're parking behind that second sign, they can't see anything in front of them. I've discussed this with city, um, Adam before about getting more signage up there, it hasn't happened. It's at Southdale, um, half of that is signed and I like how it's been done along the light posts. But then now all the new stuff north of it, there's no signage. Um, seems very unfair to.
Yeah.
People getting ticketed on that south section of Southdale and then they're like, well, there's somebody parked on that side up here. And I'm like, no signs. So just looking for some uniformity, and uniformity, um, from the signage to help us out.
Yeah.
Um, we're in a very tough spot, kind of in the middle, trying to do what's right for the people, enforce things fairly, um, and reasonably, so.
I can see where that would be tricky.
It is very tricky, so, it's put us in a lot of, a lot of bad positions. And then the same thing with, um, trailers. Now, if there's a whole block that has no houses being lived in, is it reasonable to ticket a construction trailer? That's parked on one side of the house, or one side of the street that's building that house? So I just really ask the council to look at some reasonableness and to hopefully help us out. With, uh, the deputies down here to be able to enforce that fairly across the city, so, with signage.
I guess if we were just to do no parking signs, how do we determine where, though? Like, we can't not park the whole city.
Correct, and, and I don't mean it to be applicable to the city, cause like I said, the, there are different areas in Horace where the lot sizes and street sizes allow parking.
The, like, the compact residential?
I know we've met with Brenton, um, I don't know, year or more ago, and he had talked about having somebody. Go through and set up a defined, okay, if the street's this width, there's no parking either side. If it's this width, parking one side.
And I suppose like, depending on the, the lot, uh, width too? Because with those smaller lots, you don't have a lot of space in between driveways.
There's not.
Well, is there a way that we can, like, try to figure all that out? So we can just have it all at one meeting and then boom, 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 or what?
Yeah, if that's the desire of the council, the direction has not been, been made by the council. I think the, the previous practice was, issues were presented to the council, the council would say, hey, take a look at this. An example was in Lost River, uh, by the park.
Yeah.
Uh, residents had concerns with, with parking there, uh, and so the council directed Jim to look at where would it make the most sense to have no parking signs? And then those signs were installed by Public Works. If there's a desire by the council to set some sort of standard or direction, you can certainly give that to, to either, uh, Jace, Jim, whoever.
For me, listening to Deputy Keller, I don't, I don't want their job to be harder and I don't want them to have to. Him and ha about, well, what's the right thing to do here? Like, I, I feel like we need to help them do their job.
Well, it's helping the residents and that's why we're here with this issue. Is a resident came to the council and said, I have this issue, there's no clarification on this and if it applies to me, it should apply to everyone in the city. And so what we tried to do is provide clarification on what can be parked on city streets. If this is not the answer and the answer is the signs, then I think that's totally a feasible option. I think that's the most clear in terms of enforcement by the deputies and, uh, residents of the city. If they see a no parking sign, obviously don't park there.
So what does it look like then, Brent, if we were to?
Lucas, what are we talking about here? All we're talking about is camping trailers, fifth-wheel semis and a. All we're talking about is camping trailers, fifth wheel semis, and a travel trailer, meaning?
But Sarah, it goes, it goes beyond that. There just needs to be some uniformity with throughout the whole city. Whether, and like I said, and how do we enforce that trailer stuff when there's no signage?
So I would say in regards to uniformity for street widths, having a set parameters to say into the streets a certain width, then there'd be no parking on one side or both sides or not.
And you would know that right away when?
Well, that discussion did occur with the council. Last time we talked about parking ordinance and staff was directed to just tackle the neighborhoods as we could. So Jim and I would go sit down and go through, okay, what makes sense, what doesn't? And then we'd present each development or each area town over time. And have we gone through now, we haven't gone through every single development or area, but we've gone through quite a few of them. And it was just kind of piecemeal over time in order to be able to, one, be able to keep in mind the time for Public Works to be able to put all those signs up. And then also incurring costs of all the different signs. And then also paying attention to some areas, street width. The council, my understanding, if I recall correctly, was street width, that, that approach maybe didn't necessarily work in every single area. Because otherwise you'd be going, no parking on the street at all in various areas of Horace where historically folks have parked on the street. So that's, that's why we didn't have the uniformity based on street width.
If that's how you want to do it, as one section at a time, that's fine. But again, we have new developments where there's half sign, half not. And as far as fairness wise to people living in those communities, I don't think it's fair why one person would get ticketed on this block and you go a block north of them and they can park there, so.
I definitely think it's imperative that we get that fixed like ASAP.
Is there, is it possible to put that on developers? When they, you're developing an area, you guys go in ahead of time and say, we don't want parking on one side, you guys are gonna need to sign it?
On new developments, I believe that's part of our standards, is that it's a part of the actual project.
In where?
Well, I know, I thought?
Which one's sixth, I'm sorry? Oh, if you go all the way up to the north end of Southdale, there's nothing up there. Oh, is that, oh, that's a different one?
And I thought we'd?
Sunset's not complete yet.
I thought we had kind of discussed for future development processing that we were going to make the road widths long enough so we could at least have, or wide enough so we could at least have parking on one side. I thought? Thank you, Jim, I stand corrected. But in my defense, we weren't gonna do parking on that road anyway. When we talk about, and to this specifically, when we're talking about no parking, in this instance, are we talking no parking, or are we specifically talking about the trailers?
It would be no parking. That's another consideration I was gonna bring up, is you have residents with some of those lots that are forty feet that likely park on, on the street. Because their driveway might not accommodate parking for two or three vehicles. So, so that's another consideration for the council.
And those are my comments. I had enforcement issues, which I knew were a problem. And yeah, I guess I want it both ways on the roads and the?
What the city could consider is, is getting signage that's specific to trailers. And just put an image of a trailer with a X through it or whatever, and then just reference the ordinance at the bottom of it.
It's kind of a big expense just to put a picture of a trailer with a line through it, not have the whole no parking sign. Because at some point, we're gonna have to come back through developments and put in no parking signs as well for everything, not just trailers.
And I don't know, maybe there's something in Sentry Code that says if it's an ordinance, it doesn't need signage.
We've had this discussion before, and I can totally see where the deputies are coming from with the concern of issuing a citation when Sentry Code says that signage is necessary. I also know that the city, through its home rule powers, have the ability to regulate their streets. And so there's?
They do, but like I said, thirty-nine, thirteen, three specifically says it has to be signed.
Correct, Sentry Code, but what I'm saying is there are certain provisions that cities, through their home rule powers, they can, they can go above and beyond what Sentry Code says. It's not for all of them.
And I think just letting us know some of that, because I mean, we're, there's a lot of Sentry Code. So I'm gonna probably be watching the legislation update tonight for the next few hours after this. It's a lot to keep up with.
Sure, and we could certainly look into it further and provide clarity on that. But I don't know if that necessarily addresses our, our current issue, because I think the council still would be concerned too of?
Yeah, and I think it's reasonable that people aren't parking trailers, travel trailers on the hot roads for days or weeks, so.
Yeah, there's, there's no reason that anyone should be parking campers or fifth wheels or motorhomes, you know, stuff like that on the streets. Our streets aren't wide enough. It's been an issue for some time. And it's just, I mean, this is something that we can enact in our own policy, correct, Home Rule?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, the city already had it, and now essentially it's just expanding and providing more clarification as to what, what cannot be?
Defining.
Yeah, what cannot be parked on the streets. It's just, it's one thing to have the ordinance in place, but if the deputies aren't able to enforce it or to write citations, then we're gonna have an issue with our stool. And we're gonna have a one-legged stool or a two-legged stool, and we need three.
True, true. I see what you're saying.
And I think a lot of it comes down to individual planning. I'm a camper owner. When I bought my brand-new camper, I specifically measured my driveway and bought according to what would fit, not block my sidewalk.
I can see you doing that.
Well, it's, to me, that's common sense, you know, you're not gonna?
I could see the issue or concern of the signage, but at the same time, I would just bring up, earlier you mentioned enforcement, parking, blocking like a sidewalk or?
That's Sentry Code.
So that's where, but I'm also going, it's okay, there isn't signage on those either, so.
But North Dakota Sentry Code allows that for those ones specifically in thirty-nine, ten, forty-nine, and fifty. So that's the difference, what we're looking at. One's Sentry Code, one's not. So that's all I ask is everybody, we try to be very reasonable. And just getting that signage in, so it's fair, I think, to everybody.
So if the council was to go the route of additional signage or to review for the areas, make sure so there's no surprises or anybody. If you recall, the last time we went through doing some signage in areas, fire had quite a few concerns of signage in regards to street widths and getting fire trucks through. So I just wanted to mention that is, that is a concern they've expressed before. Not saying that we need to go one route or another. I'm just mentioning it so there's no surprises.
And I'd have to look again, but I do believe there's also Sentry Code that says emergency vehicles need to be able to get through, so. If nobody has any questions for me, I'll step back.
Thank you. Alright guys, what do you want to do?
I have no issue with adding this verbiage and supplementing with signage. I think that's reasonable.
I agree with Sarah.
I do too.
Alright, I will look for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the parking ordinance amendment. Do, do we need to add any language about evaluation of signage or not, because at this time?
No, it's not gonna get addressed this year anyway. Frost is coming.
That's, that's my motion.
Alright, I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, moving on to number thirteen, public comment policy. Brent, you have this one? Oh, okay, sorry, Lucas can take this one too.
Yeah, so the North Dakota Legislature enacted Senate Bill twenty-one eighty this session. What twenty-one eighty did was required that governing bodies for cities and park districts were required to have public comment on their agenda. And then also have a policy in place regulating public comment. The city of Horace was already in compliance with having public comment on its agenda, as you all know. So that was fine, but what Horace did not have was a policy that regulated what type of comment would be received by the council, the time limit associated with each speaker, the duration of public comment itself. And so that was all put into, into a draft policy. This policy only applies to the city council. It does not apply to the planning commission. It does not apply to the special assessment commission. It applies to the city council. The park board already did their policies, they have already approved that and implemented it, so that's in place. Just walking through this briefly, it says that it's gonna be the first thing on the agenda, non-procedural. It's already on there for Horace. The biggest thing that I question and want confirmation from the council, to provide comments, individuals must complete a public comment card prior to the public comment agenda item, including the individual's name, address, and item to be addressed during the public comment agenda item. Public comment cards will be available at the meeting. My assumption was, we typically have a table back there, that they would just be put there. And then residents or, or members of the public who want to provide a comment would submit those to city staff. When we got to the public comment period, we would just hand those cards to the mayor. He would say, okay, we have so-and-so wanting to discuss this. Your opportunity to talk is now. And then they would approach the table to provide their comment. The way the, the draft policy that the League of Cities sent out to various municipalities was that the comments in the comment cards had to be submitted noon the day of the meeting to afford staff opportunity to compile the comments. And then the comments would be restricted to the previous agenda, items that were on the agenda or the current agenda. So people could only comment on those, those types of matters. I did not feel like the city of Horace wanted those type of restrictions on there. If I'm wrong, we can change this. This is just a policy. I even questioned if the council and you, Mr. Mayor, wanted comment cards. I don't know, but it is a way to put in writing what the comment is, so we have that, that record. And then we also can keep order of, okay, so-and-so, you're up, you have three minutes, go. And then here's what they're going to be discussing. So something to, to consider from the council. Three just again says, Mr. Mayor, you'll have the comment cards, and then you'll read off the name. And then the person can approach and discuss their, their item, limited to three minutes. The individual will be notified by Matt's wonderful timer up there that their three minutes have expired and that they have to conclude what they're saying. The public comment agenda item will be limited to thirty minutes and ten commenters. I don't think in my time here that I've ever seen ten commenters during the public comment. And I don't think it's gone over thirty minutes. I think people have typically been pretty respectful of time during their public comment. So I think that that will be fine, if the council thinks that that needs to be adjusted. We can certainly adjust that. And then six, this is where the, the draft policy or the model policy said it had to be pertinent to the last agenda or the current agenda. I just said it has to be pertinent to the city and directed at the council as a whole. Comments may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful. They can't include information that's exempt or confidential. They can't interfere with the orderly conduct of the meeting, so I don't want someone coming in here and just yelling at the council. Although it would be amusing, we probably don't want that for, for purposes of a good, good meeting. We don't want, or anything that's otherwise prohibited by law. So those are the comments that we can't have. Comments may be prohibited if an alternative procedure exists. So if we have a public hearing, obviously, let's have the comments during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Individuals may not yield their allotted time, so you'll recall we had that kind of happen tonight. So this prevents that during the public comment portion. Because otherwise what happens is you're gonna get potentially five people that are just allotting their time or conceding their time, if you will, to one person, and that person's gonna talk for thirty minutes, or whatever my math was. And then individuals unable or unwilling to speak in person may submit written comments to the city administrator prior to the meeting. If the comments are received twenty-four hours before the meeting, he'll present those during public comment. If not, they'll be addressed after the meeting. And then any written comments submitted must identify the item to be addressed by the council. So with that, Senate Bill twenty-one eighty references that a new section of Sentry Code will be implemented. My assumption is that will be August first, and that likely will be North Dakota Sentry Code forty-four oh four thirty-four. And so when that happens, we'll just modify this policy to incorporate that statutory section within it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, the policy is required. I would look to any modifications that the council has or that you have on this. We can make those changes, and then the council can adopt the policy.
Yes, sir. Okay, so please print your name. It's gonna be probably challenging for me to pronounce some residents' names. I would like them to be residents of Horace, or at least landowners of Horace. I would like, I would like them actually done ahead of time. I don't think handing them to Brenton right as the meeting starts. I don't want to speak for him, but I believe he's gonna be busy, you know, right before each of the meetings as they start. And it may not be the best use of his time. And other than that, I, I didn't see a lot of problem with it. I do agree that we should not be allowing people to give their time to somebody else, to let somebody else can continue speaking. That was in there. I don't think I heard you say that, but I totally agree with that. And I'll look for others for more comments.
So can I just address your, your comments quick?
Yes, sir.
Or just to get clarification? So the reason I didn't put limited to just residents of the city is the city engages with other stakeholders that are not residents of the city, so I didn't know if you wanted to preclude them from discussing, because a lot of times?
For, for public comment, I think that's more situations that maybe the city is not aware of. For people that are possibly outside the city, they're usually gonna be talking about a specific agenda item. Our public comment has been stuff that has not been on the agenda at the time. I realize that your, your policy here talks about something that has been on the agenda, either current or the previous meeting. And that's how it's different. And I'll look for you to, look for others to, to discuss what they would like to see on there. Whether you want to limit it to something that was on the agenda or on the previous agenda, because that would then eliminate discussions like what we heard earlier this year for, let's say fireworks. Or there was one night that almost everybody besides Ron stood up and made a public comment, no offense. So it was a fun night. But yeah, I'm trying to make sure that for, for comment, I want people to be able to bring up things in the city that we may not be aware of. And if you limit it to just this current agenda or the previous agenda, you may not be getting those comments.
And I, I'll just chime in quick. I'm sorry, Mayor Trudeau, I don't, I don't agree. I don't think we even need comment cards, and I think it would be much too laborious for residents to submit a comment card at some period in advance of the time of the meeting.
My, my concern with in advance of the meeting is, are we gonna stick to it? That, that was my fear with that one. Because you are fairly willing to allow people to provide public comment, and so? So if they are, if they are going to have a?
It's Sarah. I thought there was something else on there, sorry.
If they are going to have a, the time limit. So let's say it's noon the day of the meeting, are we gonna actually enforce it is my, was my fear with that?
I'm okay with the comment cards. That doesn't bother me. It might be nice for people to less impulsively come up and say something and plan it out. I guess I agree with Stephanie that I think since the culture is such that you are used to showing up and being able to say something same day, that moving to a comment card is one small step to have a little more procedure, but having it change? At what time you submit it might be a step. Not too far, but maybe just too different for the residents who are used to being able to say. If that makes sense, maybe too big of a shift.
Thought with the comment card is it's literally just gonna say, name, address. Comment item.
Could it be like.
Briefly describe. Yeah, topic, something, it's gonna say, I wanna talk about mosquitoes.
So I I would just say if if you did a comment card, if it's at noon, great, if you do four o'clock, we could even do like a four o'clock or whatever. If you wanted us to have in advance. Otherwise, if you have it before here, we can make it work.
How do you do it, if it's a card?
We we don't have a process for a card yet, so we could create something online, or we could do something as actual card.
I feel like very few residents are going to remember or or understand that they have to reach out at like noon or four before the meeting. I just, I mean, I totally see what we're trying to do there, but I just don't think it's practical.
Okay, Sarah, do you have any comments on this?
No, as you take public comment, I default to your preference on this. I'm open to any comments, pretty much anytime.
And and I'm not hard that set that I have to have a comment card. I I definitely need to find a way to limit time on public comment, to make sure people don't ramble. I I look at ways for people to try to come with a a clear concise thought, so.
And and I think the benefit of the comment card is first in line. If we have an issue where we have more than ten, it's whoever provides that comment card first. Once we get to ten, we're saying, we're not taking any more. Public comment, commenters or individuals at this meeting, so that that to me is the benefit of the comment card, not necessarily compiling. The cards and figuring out what what everyone wants to discuss before the meeting, it's it's essentially to make sure we keep it less than ten.
Okay.
I I I think that sounds like a good idea, but it also could have something on it like. Public comment, individuals will be limited to blank, I mean, it also gives them a little information, perhaps. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll we'll have the policy itself sitting with in my head, we're gonna have the policy sitting next to the comment card, so people can see.
As they walk in.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Fair enough.
Are you gonna put it in the Horace happenings or something to make sure people know?
It's a poll question.
Yeah, we could do that.
I suppose if we have a little table to sign, people know when they walk in, if they have enough, they wanna have a public comment, they get to see that the cards are there.
Cause you're gonna accept them that day, right?
Mm-hmm. So whatever council, you know. Has approves within its policy. If you would like that to be like an article or content within Horace happenings, that's not an issue, that's not a problem. It just may take a little while just to get into there, just based on when we have it kick out, but it's not a problem to have out.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Clarification from you, Mr. Mayor, on if you want it to be a resident of the city or owner of property. Kinda left that one hanging.
I, like I said, I was more concerned about the, had to be part of the current agenda or a previous agenda. Just because if if somebody's bringing something up that we may may not be aware of. Right now, Horace is the only city in the area that allows people that are not residents to speak at our public comment period. I don't know if the rest of the council wants to keep that tradition going or not.
I guess I haven't really had anybody that had a public comment period that wasn't a resident.
Or a stakeholder, I don't have anything against letting stakeholders. In addition to residents.
I mean, usually the stakeholders are just talking during the public.
As I can guarantee you, you're gonna get more.
Oh.
I I have one word, annexation. The experience that we had going through the annexation process allowed people that weren't residents of the city to have comment because they were stakeholders.
Okay, thoughts? If not, I guess I'll make my decision then, I would like them to be residents or landowners within the city. If they want, if it's somebody outside of the city, they can ask to have something put on the agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, one more point of clarification, are you meaning within city limits or within our extraterritorial jurisdiction?
ET, okay.
And for the record, I think you manage the people coming up to make public comment very well.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect.
That that, yeah, let the record reflect that. Well, folks, I can't make the motion, even though all the questions were posed to me. Kinda odd, so I'll look for somebody to make a motion.
It's it's not odd, you're the one that controls the public comment, period, so it's.
But we're the ones making the motion.
Yeah, you guys make the decision, but it's based off.
You're gonna tell me what I can and can't do.
Okay, well, I guess I can make a motion. To. Create the public comment policy. Per what Jeff said.
We can go back to the recording to see what I said, I guess.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And Sarah?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, motion carries. Moving on, number fourteen, Brenton, City Hall discussion.
Do you want me to take this one?
Okay. I'll try to be quicker than the public comment and conversation, so. What this is, is regards to City Hall Architect Request for Qualifications and Development Architecture or Architect Selection Committee. We've had City Hall conversation on and off for quite a few years. Recent or more recently, the the city council approved city. Staff to proceed with pursuing a construction manager at risk process for that. In the process for selecting a CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk. We need to have an architect, so our overall goal is, one, to have an architect for this project, but two, to have the architect serve on the CMAR selection committee also. Within this process, this is a RFQ, Request for Qualifications. Within that Request for Qualifications, we're looking to see, obviously. Who the selection committee would feel, what firms would be the best suited to serve the needs for the city. And get us a product that we're actually looking for. We have overall proposed timeline, so this is a little different than what we had in the agenda at our last meeting, this was tabled the last meeting. Our goal would be to distribute the RFQ, basically put it on our website tomorrow, July twenty-second. Proposals would be due noon, August twenty-second, so we give them a month to be able to respond. And then architecture firm interviews would be the week of September eighth through eleventh, if possible. Within that, then, like I mentioned, the architect that does get selected, they would serve on or represent architect component on the CMAR selection. And we would probably start that process of doing RFQ for a construction manager at risk. Towards the tail end of this selection process for an architect. We would develop a selection committee that's included within this memo here too, or that we have. The committee provides a recommendation of the finalists to the city council, kinda like planning commission gives the council a recommendation. This committee would provide a recommendation of what architect to work with moving forward. For this project. On that committee would be the mayor. Jim, Joel, our project manager from staff, Matt Volts, our finance director, and then Ron Erickson has. Agreed to help us out with that, giving us a planning commission perspective. Also, we're assuming to have an odd number of people, that way you'd be not have a tie. I would serve more as a facilitation inside of coordinating and facilitating with. The committee and architects that would be selected for interview and that process there. So what we're looking for is council approval to proceed with RFQ. And then also establish the selection committee as proposed. If you have any questions, we can answer.
This is just for the first step, like if there was more city council. Involvement in future part of City Hall, that would be down the road, that wouldn't be during this part.
Yeah, this is the step two of many, many, many steps. So this would be to get the architect on board. Expectations architect would obviously design the building, but also kinda spec it out, give us concepts, they would be engaged with public involvement. The expectation within RFQ is that they'd be involved engaging the public with the city and the CM or CMAR selected too. So we would have those different perspectives and engaging what would work for the community, so like I said, this is just step one of many. Moving forward in the process. And. The overall design phase and architect heavy component, you're looking at probably about a year of them going through that process right there. So, and I'm just giving you a ballpark, it may it may go slightly quicker, it may go longer. But a general idea would give you, to give you would be about a year long.
Any further questions?
Okay, well, I guess I just wanna make sure that we're not like. How do we know? I guess we kinda talked a little bit about it, Brenton, but how do we know like financially, like that we're able to move forward? Like, all of that stuff will come back to us, correct?
Yes, the architect works with the city to. And the construction manager to sculpt the project, we tell them what we're looking for, that's also why we'd have the public engagement also. And then they would provide concepts, and then they'd help price it out. And if they come in, let's say they come in at a number that we're going, oh, this is super high. Then we work with them to tone it down, to get it within the area that we're comfortable with.
Okay, so what does the public engagement actually look like? Is that like surveys?
This is, this is.
That would be the architect to work with us to determine and customize that out for our means.
Okay.
Yep. It's fairly fluid.
This is a pretty.
Yep, go ahead, Sarah.
This is pretty standard in any CMAR agreement, is assigning. An architect on the board, and then they help coordinate all the construction, and the questions about, you know, cost and all that stuff, that's all many steps down the road. But this is our advocate, right? This is our person that designs within our budget, within our means, what we're asking for based on public input, and they help facilitate those meetings.
And that's for, can we afford to do a City Hall, I do believe we have quite a bit of the funds available to do so. It's a matter of what are the priorities to the city council in regards to. What elements do you want within that type of project? And then we do have, at some point, we'll have some other needs, facility needs. How do we balance those facility needs in the future, but overall, we have quite a few dollars already set aside for that. Project, or for building facilities.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Architect Request for Qualifications and Architect Selection Committee.
These can be combined, Brenton?
Yes, they could, they could be combined.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Oh, I'll give it to Sarah then. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Got it. All right, moving on to item number fifteen, preliminary budget, Brenton. Bottom line up front, let's do this.
Bottom line up front, I'll be about the quickest budget discussion I think I've ever had. Overall, we're working through, yeah, I know, Lucas loves that one. Overall, we're working through, we're being, Matt and I, we've worked with Jeff a little bit on this too, of the twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six preliminary budget. Staff is still looking for if council has any priorities or concerns or areas that they would like us to try to emphasize. I can't promise everything, obviously, we have to bring that to council to see what we can get worked out. But if you do have any feedback for us regards to that, please let Matt and I know by Wednesday this week, at the latest, so we have a chance to actually get something together. And make some adjustments, we're going through fine tuning of that preliminary budget right now. On August fourth, so our next city council meeting, you'll have more of a detailed presentation of the or of the twenty-twenty-six budget. Preliminary budget, keep in mind on by August tenth, we need to have the. Basically, the property tax dollars that we levy or levied amount. We need to set our cap for that. Within the property tax bill, the three percent capping, that effectively reduces our mill rate by about two point seven mills right now. So we're already having a reduction, which has been forced upon us there. However, we are working through the budget, so if you go with the three percent cap that we're allowed. Along with our new growth. The preliminary budget, you're basically setting that maximum dollars that we could levy. That's the goal of the preliminary budget, and then also, we'll be asking you. To set a preliminary budget or a budget hearing date that would fall between September seventh and October seventh. That's just like any other year we've had. And then the other question we'll have for you, and so you could start thinking about is, would you like to have a workshop for going through that? I could, I could go through budget quickly, I could go through budget in hours, whatever you prefer to do. So it's, we wanna cater to what is of preference to council. I'll also be reaching out and seeing if I get some time with each of you, or myself, Matt, or both of us, to be able to just touch base on budget with you too. So that will be coming, so please let us know when you are available, so. That is all I had for that.
Okay, any questions for Brenton? Everybody knows the dates in mind? Okay. Sarah, do you got any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, good. Moving on to number sixteen, Sunset Valley paving request, Brenton, you have this one?
I'll try to be quick on this one too, the developer for Sunset Valley, being constructed privately by a contractor for the developer. Has requested consideration from the city to. Not do their initial, or the final overlay on the project right away. Instead, they would like to be able to. Basically bring the asphalt up to the curb, like what we were doing on any of our new subdivisions that are coming forward now. South Hill Six would be example, correct, Jim? No? Okay, have we done it yet? Okay, we're, our standards are saying that we're going to do that moving forward. But basically what they would do is, they would bring the asphalt up to the edge of the curb. And then when it is time for the final overlay, they grind that down a little bit. And then they would put the final overlay down. They're asking for that because that is the same, that is the same approach that we are using for city projects moving forward. And also, they're asking that because it does give time for homes built in there, and then get a nicer product, the road being finished. From the staff perspective, we didn't really see a whole lot of concern regarding allowing them to follow the same process we're doing for a city project. As long as we could have assurances that the developer is still on the hook for. The cost of that final overlay. They've indicated to us that they work with us in their bank to be able to be attached that loan, or have those dollars committed for that overlay. In talking with Lucas, we we were talking about how we could possibly reflect, how we. Um in talking with Lucas, we we were talking about how we could possibly reflect, how we could reflect that within the maintenance agreement that we're finishing up, and then we'll be bringing the maintenance agreement to the city council. So we could identify that on the responsibility and commitment from the developer um within that maintenance agreement. So that is how how we can have that security and then we can have some securities hopefully from their bank assuring that those dollars are there. Being that this development is being expected to be having homes built by the developer. They're a developer and builder, and they're doing that exclusive of their product. They're gonna have a lot more at stake also than maybe the average builder or developer because it's it's them long-term. They're not going away after a couple of years. So it's all heritage home houses going in there, and then they maintain that HOA and the clubhouse and different things like that. So they're gonna have an interest of having that final overlay completed when it is time. But we had identified in the maintenance agreement, like we do with uh developer agreements, ID agreements, saying when the trigger points are. We had treated it similar to what we do for any other development as a special assessment. Uh but in that maintenance agreement, we would not, uh basically, we're calling out to, we're not going to use the special assessment district to pay for it.
Okay, so what are you looking for, for a motion?
Looking for approval from the council of consideration of the developer's request uh in regards to the final payment lift and to account for those payment assurances in the overlay, in the maintenance agreement for the overlay.
Okay.
Yeah, this is very standard and actually ends up in a nicer product at the end, so I'm in total agreement. I'll make a motion to approve the request allowing for the um necessary funds in the associated maintenance agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, uh Jim, bottom line up front, engineering, public work support. I have no questions.
No. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Good deal. Uh Brenton, bottom line up front, uh city administrator report.
Same thing Jim said.
Good deal. All right, bottom line up front for me, um I have nothing to report. Sarah, do you got anything on your uh portfolio to report tonight?
Nope, I will hold until the next meeting. It's nothing that has to be addressed immediately. I'll be back in ten days.
Good deal. Okay, Naomi?
None, thank you.
Okay, and uh Stephanie?
I have no, I have no report.
Rachel?
Nope, nothing important.
We do have a meeting earlier or later this week uh for Bean Days, I believe, right?
I'm so sorry. Bean Days meeting tomorrow.
Okay, other than that?
You have nothing more to report.
Other than that.
Very well. All right, um with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right.